They're pretty passionate. Yeah, in fact, there's a guy from Windsor, he was there, Larry Adams. He's pretty open.
Okay, I think we have everybody, do you have everybody who's gonna be here for this evening, at least to get started? So, let's get started. This is a working, working work session, so we'll be eating as we are working here tonight. And for the October 1st Town Board work session, starting at 5:07 PM. Goal of this work session is to have the Town Board receive information on topics of town business and town staff and from the Town Manager, in order to exchange ideas and opinions regarding these topics. We have an item this evening that will start with, as we're diving into budget, so Operation and Maintenance Presentation on the 2019 Budget. First of all, we're gonna do an overview of all funds. It looks like Dean, you're gonna be leading that one off?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In your packet this evening is quite a bit of information, and trust me, for everything that's in there, there's even more backup stuff. So, we tried to keep it at a more manageable size. Just a reminder of how we got here, this is the second stage of our budget development. Back in August, we met in a similar situation and talked about our capital improvement plan. Now, begin, and then in Oc- October, August, the department heads went to work with their departments on their operation budgets. Then, those were due to finance on September 1st. Next step was that the department heads, myself, and Shane met and went over the budgets, produced them, made some adjustments, and that process here tonight. So, like I said, it's a lot of information. What I would like to do, as much as we can, is go over the, the stuff at the 30,000-foot level. I mean, you're welcome to ask questions, but, like I said, there's a lot of numbers here, and we like to keep it moving along as much as I can. The, I will start with the fund balance overview, then when I'm finished, Shane will speak to personnel and staff, and then when Shane's finished, we will get, hand it over to Eric and Tara and Kendra. So, okay, so moving along. That's me, we don't need to talk about me. Okay, short spot on the revenues here. I mentioned this in our, one of our regular meetings when we got our assessed valuation. We did see another increase in assessed valuation this year, approximately 68.2 million. Forty-eight million of that was related to oil and gas, and the residential increased in both counties. Now, by result of that, we expect to collect about 816,000 more dollars in property tax this year. And I wanna stress here, I feel it's important that I stress, we are not changing the mill levy. That's just the same mill levy on, on a higher assessed valuation. So, that's, that's how that works. The, in this version of the budget, we do not have, we are not reflecting the increase in road impact fees or a water rate recommendation in this version. We've been talking about both of those, we have not finalized that yet, so we will put that in a later version of the budget if they are approved. So, where we are now, in total, this is just total dollar amounts here, over here in the 2019 budget column, our beginning balance, this is all our funds, keep in mind. We'll start out with about 77, call it 78 million in, in our balances, collect about 68.2 million in revenue, gives us resources available, 146. Our expenditures here, as Shane had talked about in his letter in the budget packet, about 76.8 million, leaving us with an ending balance of 69.1. Now, that same chart expanded just a little bit here, breaks it down into a little bit more on the expenditure side. You can see we break it into personnel, I'm still, I should still be over here in this column, personnel, O and M, debt service and transfers, and capital outlay for that 76.8 number. For the, a couple things to point out here, you can see, if you go over here on the capital outlay, the past couple of years in this, this whole time period displayed, there's a couple of years of really large capital outlay stuff. If you recall, in that time period, we had done, or will be doing, three major building projects. The public workshop, the, uh, Parks Shop, and, uh...
Museum.
Jesus, I forgot.
Museum?
Museum, yeah, okay. Oh, no, and back here, I meant to say the rec center, I'm sorry, I drew a blank there. That being said, you can see that, in that time, even though the dollars, the dollar amounts varied, we were pretty steady with the personnel, the percentage of the budget that's personnel. So, Shane will talk about that a little bit more later, but I was just demonstrating it from year to year here. That item shown in a different way, same kind, same numbers, just, this one shows the distribution through our various funds and accounting groups of how we approach the budget process. You can see at the bottom here, same numbers that were on the other page, just broken up by our various accounting funds. One thing to, to point out, to point out here, the very first line here, the general fund, you can see we have more revenue planned to come in than to go out, which is important, and we'll talk about it a little bit later, is, this is where we historic, historically had accounted for most of our full-time employees. We did an exercise to redistribute some of that work, to more accurately reflect all the stuff that the employees do. You talking, are you gonna talk more about that, maybe?
Yeah, we could expand on that some.
Yeah, a little bit. But, as an example, like myself, currently, we have all of my salary and benefits in the general fund, but I don't do just general fund stuff, I do water fund, you know, sewer fund, CRC work, you know, that kinda thing. So, what we did in this year's budget was, we, we diced that up more critically, you know, spent a little more time analyzing that and spreading the allocation of that money over the other funds. So, that's how we were able to increase the number of employees while still balancing our general fund budget.
So, Dean, can I stop you a minute? So, the current expenditures that we see in front of us?
Yeah.
They show that those salaries spread out in all these different funds?
Yes.
Okay.
Dean?
Yes.
A couple of questions on this, on this slide.
This one?
Is that Community Rec Center Fund a debt service fund, and that's why it's kinda trickling down to the 198?
Yeah, that one, the, and, that fund, the only thing that we, that was the original portion of the building, and for the longest time, and I guess still, really...
Say, and I'll talk to...
But, the, the reason on that is, yes, there, there is debt service in that fund, but also a thing that is, that brings it down, is that really the only revenue we put in this portion of the fund, our bill, our room rentals, is that correct? Yeah. So, you can see, on the next, the next line below it, where the expansion of the Rec Center Fund, this one always had, also has debt service in it, but it, there's more revenue that goes in there. Most of the programming revenue goes in there, the .75 sales and use tax that we passed a few years ago goes in there. And, if you recall from the monthly reports, the sales and use tax we're collecting on that .75 is outpacing what we had planned. So, it keeps that, that part of the fund healthier than, than the original part.
Well, Dean, if, if I can just jump in, I'll tell you that when we talked about it as staff, it was a little bit confusing for me, these two funds, because we look at, you know, I said, "Well, how, how do we generate money in the Rec Center Fund?" And it's like, "Well, if we rent rooms in this place, this place, this place, and this place, they go to the Rec Center, if we, if we use space over in this space over here is Rec Center Expansion." They both have their own taxes, but the Rec Center Expansion has the bigger tax, and it's also where we put, like, any membership dues or anything else, all goes through Rec Center Expansion. And so, I think what we're gonna do next year, and this year, by the time we were there, it, it wasn't timely enough to do that, but I think from a budgetary standpoint, I'd like to actually combine those two. We'd still show the taxes separately, and we showed the debt service separately, so we're gonna stick with the will of the bond measure, make sure that we're good there. But it's kinda crazy having two different funds, because it's just, it's a bit my optic to have, well, this, you know, if you're in this room, then, then the money goes to this pot, but if you're in this room, it goes to that pot, but, you know, in personnel, well, where does Tara work for? You know, how much does she work for the Rec Center, and how much for the expansion? It's just, it's a little bit crazy. So, I tell you that that's a low fund balance, but it's not to be concerned. When we combined the two together, and we actually looked at, at the debt service and the reserves, we're, we're fine, which is another reason why we really, I think, for budgetary purposes, need to just kind of mash those two together under one fund, and that'll be presented to the board a year from now. It just, by the time that I saw how crazy it was, we were already kinda down the road. But we're, we're planning on combining those next year.
I guess at the end of the day, make, make us a question was, are we concerned that the balance seems to be...
We, we are not.
And then similarly on the water, the two water funds, well, the last two water funds, you have raw water and non-potable.
Yes.
And I'm not sure what the difference is, I think raw water is non-potable.
Uh, yeah, raw water is where we account for cash in lieu of water dedication. For instance, if, that, that is, water shares that the developer either has to bring with them and give to us, or give us the money to go pay them. That eventually runs through our, our, whoever treats our water, we have to have that, those shares of water to have our water treated.
So, is the dollar balance here just the cash in lieu portion, or is it also trying to market value the in-kind that they bring?
That, it's both of them in that fund there. The non, the non-potable is where we've been tracking things like the Kern Reservoir payments and the Keiger payments and that kinda thing. We used to have, in that portion of the fund, we used to have some rental water money coming in there from Front Range Energy as part of their original development agreement, but we, that ran its course, so we don't really have too much money coming in that portion of the fund now. There's a slide up ahead here that'll show you how I, how, I feel it's okay, we have a couple of negative sections of our water fund balance, but the balance as a whole, of the whole fund, is, is positive.
It looks like on the raw water, you're anticipating spending everything we have to buy...
Well, the reason we do that is, that, that market moves pretty quickly, and we had, what we ran into, this is, this has been a long time ago, we would, some water would come up that we were interested in buying, but we, it was more than we had appropriated in the original line item. So, we would have to get an approval from Water and Sewer Board, as well as the Town Board, and by the time we got that done, a lot of times that water was gone. So, we started the practice of appropriating whatever we had available, so that if, if Dennis comes up and, you know, finds a block of water, and we have the mu, we have the balance for it, he can just go and buy it. So, yeah, that's, that's why that's...
And the second part is, just because, like, we're seeing with the CBT, you know, every, every time it goes up for auction, it's more, so there's really no time like the present. If we received cash in lieu, I think we're better off fiscally to just buy water right away with it. So, there's really two, two good reasons to budget it this way.
So, the fact that we started with the balance probably means only that we were not successful in spending the money that we had appropriated?
Well, we are, yeah, as we pointed out to the board, I think, a while back, we're seeing now that when we're going to, to bid, we're not near covering with what we're, we're bringing in. And, and I do wanna have, in, in November, have John Thornhill come and talk to the board, 'cause I think that our, our policy right now of having people bring in half cash in lieu and half water, what happens is, we get onto CBT, and we're actually bidding against the developer that needs to provide half the water. So, we're gonna talk to the board about, are we better off with the town providing 100%? Are we better asking the developers to buy it 100%? It just said that the 50/50, I don't know, it's compliant with our, our water master plan, that's why we do it that way, but I think it's probably time to have a good conversation with the board of, is this the best way of doing business? 'Cause I think that we're just bidding against ourselves.
But, thank you, sorry.
So, is it safe to say that the main water fund PIF that shows the 10 million balance funds, those other three funds are...
Is what?
We draw funds off of the, what we call the water fund PIF for the NISP, for the raw water and the non-potable, is that where those, we just pull it out of?
No, the, the water fund PIF is when people, if someone builds a new house and they're on our system, they pay us a tap fee. PIF is another description for, what we usually call tap fees. We did not, until a few years ago, we did not have that NISP portion of that fund. We started, when it became apparent that NISP had, was getting a better chance to be passed, we didn't, and we were gonna end up owing more money further down the road, we put a small piece, we added a small piece to our tap fee to help start bankrolling that.
But can't those, all those four funds interchange amongst themselves?
To a certain extent, though, the water fund PIF is strictly by law, we have to use that to expand our system. So, if we wanna run a new water line somewhere, you know, wherever it is, that we pay for that, that type of thing...
Yeah, it could be like storage, we could buy, we could pay for a new tank with that, we could buy lines, if we had our own water treatment plant, we can make upgrades there, but you, you are limited statutorily by, by where you can spend that money for those tap fees.
Okay. I think Miles has some...
Yeah, it's along the same lines of those funds. Are you concerned with the capital improvement fund dropping off so much from the beginning balance? I know we have the one-time expense of the park facility, is that...
Right. Yeah, it, it is a, a large capital improvement fund, and I, I think again, I was really concerned about it, and then I went back and looked and thought, "Well, what's driving this?" Really, if you take the parks and museum out of there, it's a pretty ho-hum year for capital improvement, so it's really just kind of a one-time, I wouldn't say elective, because the school district is set vacate by March of 2020, so we're, we're kind of, our hand is poised here. Then, then the second part of that is, even though we have a reserve policy, I think reserve policy makes perfect sense for any kinda operational budget, you know, we need to know if, if our revenues stop, if we have a state of emergency or something happens, that we can still have, run a police department, we can still plow snow, we can still operate, but, but that principle doesn't really apply to a capital improvement fund. So, the fact that we're going from, I think our reserve policy would have it somewhere north of $8 million, in like 8.1 or so, and, and we're spending down to $6 million, which are just one-time expenses anyway, it's, it's, it's always more money than I want to spend, you know, but, 'cause I, I think having a decent reserve does help the town, but on the other end, I think that you don't really need to, it's, it's gonna be the board's obviously decision, but I don't think reserve policy makes as much sense with the capital funds as it does an operational fund. So, if the board knowingly says, "Fine, we understand what we'd like to have our reserves at, but we understand this one-time purchase, and we don't really have anything on this list that we don't think is important," I think that's legitimate.
So, if we looked at this over time, by 2020, it might be up to 15 or 16, the ending balance, without a one-time kinda thing?
Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's not showing a bad trend by any means, and if you look at our other capital years, I mean, it's not really, is, all things considered, it's not a huge year that we're showing for capital expenses. So, I think that, that, the town has been really good about taking these one-time monies and putting them back into the community, which is why the streets are great, and sidewalks are great, and the parks are great, so I think that's kinda the fruits of, the benefit of spending on these capital projects.
Shane, I wanna make sure I understand the raw water, what you're proposing. Are you proposing we forget the fees in lieu of, and let them bring the water? Because, because if they, you know, say they came in today and said, "Well, we'll give you $30,000 an acre foot for X number," and we go to bid, or we go to try to buy the water, we, we could be on the hook for...
That's right, well, and what I, what I'm, I'm not proposing either option, either us providing or the developer, I just think the 50/50 policy right now is, is, has an unintended consequence, and so I just wanted the board to discuss that with, we'll get John Thornhill, and we'll get Dennis in in November, and really discuss and say, "The master plan says 50/50, is this still the right thing to do, board?" So, it'll really be for, for more discussion. So, I, I think it bears the board having a more critical discussion as far as what we're doing and how we should do it, but you're right, there, there's risk either way. I think the risk of having the development community provide it is that we're gonna definitely curtail some growth, you know, it, it's hard to get out and purchase this water, so we could certainly stem some growth if we did that. On the other hand, if we're taking 100% cash, we're taking a big burden in-house as far as doing it. So, there's no perfect answer here. Dr. Jones, it's just, I, I think we need to talk about it.
The only, to pick up back onto the capital budget, the only, the only risk I would see in, in the potential moving through the course of a year, you decide to go forward with a capital project, these are almost all third-party contracts, right? You're gonna hire somebody to build something.
That's right, yep.
And, and that contract is probably not gonna say, "But if you have an issue with funds, we'll terminate the contract without penalty." So, you, you may find yourself mid-project in a financial catastrophe.
Well, it, it's, right, and that risk does exist.
You're, you're lowering reserve on something that may be a binding commitment.
Well, and, and that's fair, I, I would tell you that staff meets monthly, and we go through the, the capital plan and really discuss, and so we're, we're taking a look at all the projects. Another thing is, our projects don't start January 1st, so we've got projects in the capital fund that are rolling out throughout the year, so I think if we're seeing any kinda revenue issues, there's a lot of money that we just don't let out in the first place. So, so, there is risk there, but I think that the, the procedures that we have in place right now helps, helps us mitigate that, because we do meet every month, talk about these projects, see where we are.
Right, before you...
Yes, sir.
Commit, yeah, that, and I think we talked about that before, it makes sense.
Okay.
I hope.
Okay, to move along. Continuing with the fund balance and, and fund balance reserve discussion, if you will recall, back in July of 2017, we passed Resolution 2017-50, where we spelled out what, what we felt was a good balance for each fund to maintain. So, for this version of our budget, I did that exercise, and that will appear on the next few slides, and it'll, it'll present in visual form some of the stuff we've been talking about here. So, the first one is the general fund, and I should say that I can send you a copy of that resolution and the memo that we did back then, to show you some of the discussion around that. So, as far as the general fund goes, getting, going back to Shane's operations funds, what we decided there was we should have two months' operating expenses, and you can see the number there. The general fund, by law, by Tabor law, requires that we have an emergency reserve. I took this out of the 2017 audit, you can see what that is there. So, those two, this number here, required reserve as per policies, simply addition of those two to get that roughly $4 million. On this version that's in your packet tonight, we are looking to end our general fund budget at the end of 2019 at 13 million. So, you can see, we're, we cleared the hurdle here by about $9 million. So, as we go through these slides, if we met the policy, I made it green, if we didn't, I made it red, so, pretty tricky, huh?
Color coded.
Park Improvement Fund is similar, but we do not do any operations in the Park Improvement Fund to account, although it is required to the Tabor Emergency Reserve, so that is that 98 number. What I was trying to get at here was that we do projects with this park projects, as you, as it would say, and a good reserve to have, I, we settled on the annual depreciation, which you can see here, I got from their, our most recent audit, and 744, again, those together gives us about eight and a half. We have, as of this draft of the budget, we have 10.1 million, it's planned to be the ending balance on that, on that fund. So, again, we got the green number here, we still have some parks to build eventually, correct? So, that money will go, hopefully, a long way. Conservation Trust, we addressed this one simply because it's, it's our lottery money that we get from the state, and they're pretty, they're restrictive as to what that money can be used for. What we settled on here was our annual trail maintenance contribution, that involves the Pooter Trail, you know, we pay for part of the maintenance, and I think this, this year, they started adding, addressing some more improvements and whatnot. So, anyway, same, same drill here, 123, we look to end 2019 is 1.1, so we're in good shape with that one as well. Now, the next one that we had, we're just alluding to here, Miles, this is our first and only red light here, so, and what I wanted to put, you, you can read it here, you know, same kinda steps, we do not, we, we had not, up until this version of the budget, accounted for any salaries in this fund. We can talk about that a little later. We did address some, we did include a transfer from this fund to the general fund to account for guys that do nothing but manage projects. So, that's a little different this year, but it helped out the general fund. So, anyway, I got a placeholder as well for the incentive for the mill development, do the math from there. Now, I wanna point out that this is, does not mean we have a, a negative fund balance here. What it means is, as per our policy, as Shane described, we, that we should, we, our policy says 8.1, we have 6, we're a little short. That will probably get well in the next few years, as the building continues.
Can we talk about this one real quick?
Yeah.
What's that? I'm a, I'm gonna talk in circles, 'cause I like the idea of a reserve, but I wanna be able to use it should we have to build a, you know, public, a parks facility, or if C-Dot came to us with a project, we wanna be flexible enough to go under the reserve, but I like the idea of a reserve, so, that's just my two cents.
So, what would you, so are you saying that we should maybe flip this?
No, I'm saying I'm okay going red this year, 'cause I know next year it's probably gonna be back up again, because we won't have a one-time project of the parks building. And that's what's putting this red, I mean, if we took that out.
Or the mill building, hopefully.
The mill, that mill will come off of there, so...
And I thought there was a request from the board, though, to even look into that $9 million Parks Building, 'cause wasn't there some question about the cost and the validity of that cost and that need at that price, when we were talking budget?
I think we talked about the storage facility.
I think we talked about the storage facility. So we've got, the estimate, I think the assumption was out at Diamond Valley, though, we've got that estimate in. It's really my goal, and I think yours goes as well, to get this done for less, but right now it's just kind of a budget placeholder based on out there. But the way we're looking at those costs, I think that we're gonna be able to hit or beat that number. Some of that's gonna be because, once we go with the parks, we also have some things out of the public workspace, some storage spaces and some other things that we wanted to address out there. So we're gonna roll that into this parks facility, so really bring the parks building out there, see what they need, and then see kind of what's in the public works. So it's, right now, until we really sit down with some contractors and get some prices, it's just kind of a best guess right now, Mayor. But, yeah.
And I would add, it's eight point five, I think, is the placeholder in the budget for both the facilities, and to Shane's point, we will address some public works items. And because of the movement of the location, it's very easy to see infrastructure costs going down. For example, we don't need to put fiber all the way out to Diamond Valley, it's already at the public works site. So there's a lot of infrastructure benefits to building at that location as opposed to building from scratch out of Diamond Valley. So I think we feel fairly certain that it will come under that, but again, we haven't gotten into the contractor discussions and design build and adding in what public works needs and seeing. But our goal, obviously, is to keep it at that level or lower.
So other concept things that I see, just again, just sitting down with Terry and Eric and talking about what we're gonna build, we wouldn't need two conference rooms. Like right now, if this went out at Diamond Valley, we would have a conference room, we'd have, you know, a locker room, restroom, we'd have a break room. All these things that we don't really need to build if we're all in one space, so I think as we put this together, and, but again, you know, we want to be smart and make sure that we're not building something like this building where we're just out of space. You know, we want to kind of plan for our future, we know that we're having the growth, so we want to be smart with this build, but I think that by moving it out to public works, we're gonna be able to save the taxpayers a lot of money, it's just a smarter place to put the building.
Well, isn't there a question about acquiring the land or something, or something with the landowner out there?
There is, staff has been meeting with the owner of the Talking Cola Park out there. Honestly, I think that we can fit the park shop and its expansion on the current site. The question is with recycling, is what really triggers that, is we say, well, where do we put the recycling site, we need more space? And then secondly, as parks start to fill up with shop space out there, now we've lost bulk storage for public works, and you know, public works needs a lot of space for that kind of stuff. So that's kind of triggering it, but it's not gonna hold us up, while we negotiate with that owner, it's not gonna hold us up moving forward.
I think we had, we did all have some questions on the capital budget itself, and maybe we address that kind of elsewhere, some.
So that'll be coming back, I think it's October twenty-second, Dean? Yeah, I think that that's when we're gonna have another re-review of the capital, is on October twenty-second.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, Diamond Valley will change, right? I don't think we're...
Well, we've already pulled that, we pulled that out of the, yeah, that's already been pulled out, that was in the parks budget.
Right.
So that has already been removed, so some of those things have already, that they...
So that's reflected in tonight's budget already?
Presentation of the recreation side of the budget, I have a slide on every capital item that's related to that as well, so if you have any questions on recreation capital, we can discuss that.
Dean, I know for non-finance people, this, I think, is always sort of a just take it by blind faith, but can you try to explain to me the rationale for defining the reserve policy based on depreciation value?
Well, the reason I did that is because, you know, the amount that we're gonna spend each year in the capital improvement fund, it can vary from year to year. The depreciation, I figured, that was a number we'll always know, once it's figured, it's not gonna change. So it's a little behind the time, but I thought it was, it was kind of a good, you know, thumbnail or a target to use to get it, some kind of steadiness to it. You know, rather than one year, and then also include anything we know we're gonna spend next year, a large project, like the incentive for the mill.
Like the mill?
Yes.
Okay, so the annual depreciation roughly is an attempt to measure your, across time, capital expenses on an annual basis?
Yes, yeah. It seemed a little more steady to me, you know, than the up and down.
But other incentives are... Why are you reserving against these?
We put, we put that in this fund because the incentives, when it originally came out, the first agreement, they had to be capital incentives. We kept it here, the second agreement, from my understanding, is just a share-back kind of deal on the, on the sales tax. We kept it in here as a placeholder to remember that we're gonna have to put that money out.
I think we were gonna do road improvements instead of putting it on the developer, so it kind of made a capital tax to us when we first negotiated.
Yeah, that was the original agreement, I think.
And I guess I share Miles' thought on this, and I think I'm kind of comfortable with where you're headed, we can manage to this risk if we have to during the year. I worry the same thing about some opportunity cost that comes up mid-year unanticipated, and boy, if we had the money, we could do X and...
I think that's the importance of having some reserve, I assume there's probably some municipalities that don't carry a reserve in their capital.
Well, that's right, and I would say we could, if we really had just this one-in-a-lifetime opportunity, again, we're projecting over thirteen million dollars in the general fund as reserve. So if we said, well, jeez, let's go ahead and loan our capital improvement fund five million dollars for this one-time deal, you're the board, I mean, we can do that, so we've still got, you know, I don't, I don't... If this were indicative of every fund we had, I would be more concerned, but this is just one snapshot, one fund.
One year.
One year, that's right.
I think that's a good point, we're looking at eight different funds here, this is when we have six million left over, where we'd like to have eight million, we're not two million in the hole. And if I look at the other seven funds, even if I look ahead, everything else, we're above where we'd like to be. So I think overall, we're healthy, because I think here, we have a good explanation of why it looks like this this year.
Yeah.
With the new builder.
Yep, to add a little to Shane's and Miles' discussion, and an opportunity that came up when we did the interchange a number of years ago. We financed it internally, you know, just loans between funds that, we borrowed it from the funds that had more money and then paid it back over time. So it gives us the flexibility to do it. Okay? All right.
Slide number forty.
Going over the time period here, this we kind of...
Yeah, so this is based on your question, David, we actually merged these together, so this rec center shows both funds, the expansion and the rec center, with the fund balance, just so we can say, okay, how are we doing?
Yeah.
Okay. Now we move, the next three are utility funds, they are a little more complicated. We, in these, we go with, instead of two months' operating expense, we go with three. Again, that's that number, annual depreciation. This one, the future NISP debt service reserve, this was from one of the studies on that project, and once we are all done, that project is finished and all the debt is issued. The nearest number I had for our portion of that debt reserve would be four and a half million a year. So I put that in here just to think that we should start building, start reserving that, you know, when the time comes, we have to put out bigger money for that project. The next, this next debt service reserve is non, for lack of a better word, non-NISP debt reserve, that's for stuff we already have existing. So anyway, add all those together, seven point two million, then down here are the various pieces of our waterfront balance, O and M, PIF, NISP, that we talked about earlier. These are all the ending fund balances from some of the first pages we had. And then to Barry's point, you see those add up to fourteen point eight as compared to our required reserve per policy, so we're about seven and a half million ahead on that one.
Dean, I have a question. On that, four and a half million?
Yeah.
Is that gonna go up every year?
No, that's...
You'll just hold one year of...
That's the worst-case scenario, yeah.
So we're not gonna start saving for future debt service?
Like I said, I just wanted to start creating us some room for when, you know, now that that project seems like it's gonna go, and we're gonna have to start making payments on it.
So we'll always reserve one-year debt service?
That's what I, that's what I've been doing, yeah.
Thank you.
Sewer fund, same kind of thing, you can see there, another green number at the bottom, we're doing pretty well with our sewer fund. Again, to Christie's question earlier, the PIF is the sewer tap that we get from a home owner when they build a home on our system. This is what we use for things like expanding capacity in our plant, we used some of this money for that headworks project a few years ago, that type of thing. And then finally, the drainage fund, just what I'll say about this, again, this is a utility fund, and to address some of the things we've been talking about, for the longest time, this fund was really poor. And we had to do a lot of work out here on the Law Basin, and for a couple of years, this drainage PIF portion of the fund was negative. But we just rode it out until we did the project, 'cause we had to do it. And then after we didn't have those big expenditures, you can see, you know, with the drainage tap fee, it's gotten healthy again. So with that, I will turn over the podium here, unless you had any questions.
Good, okay, good evening, board, how are we doing? First, I'd like to say, go Broncos, please don't tell me the score, I am recording it right now, so if you see the highlights, I don't want to know, thank you. Secondly, I want to thank Dean, I want to thank Vicki, and I want to thank all of the leadership for really putting this budget together. As you guys can see, it's a lot of work, there's been a lot of time and effort that's gone into this, so I want to recognize them for all the work they put into so far. I'd say that the theme for this budget is really responsible growth, you know, I was inundated with requests this year. I think somewhere I had about thirty-eight requests for personnel.
How many from the other departments?
Yeah, well, yeah, it was thirty-six, thirty-six and a half in Parks and Rec and Culture, and the rest were spread among the organization. So three of those were part of the reorganization that I'm including in there, but there's a lot of requests, I think there's been a lot of demands. And when you think about, not only Windsor's population, but our service area, and how we cover that through the Police Department, and through Public Works, and through Parks, and these other departments. You know, even with IT, you know, we had in this last couple of years, CDOT had all their information stolen, City of Atlanta had their information stolen, you know? So we need to be smart about these kinds of things, we need to think about this organization and this community and how we deliver services, but how do we do that responsibly? That's a big question, so, you know, I tell you, this budget, there's a good focus with the strategic plan, we've taken a lot of the boards initiatives that you've adopted, and they're represented in the capital improvement plan. The reorganization, there's key personnel budgeted in here to start us down the road of doing the reorganization. And then staffing, you know, getting to a right size. I will tell you that I use really five different lenses when I look at staffing requests. I consider first, can we afford it, you know, most important question, right, can we actually pay for this person? Second, how does a community benefit, you know, and there's community benefits to public safety, but there's obviously community benefits to Parks and Rec and Public Works and everybody else. The third is, can it be outsourced? You know, I think just because we can do a job in-house doesn't mean it shouldn't be outsourced, and the same is true in reverse, just because we could outsource something doesn't mean that we shouldn't have it in-house. So I really like to have those critical conversations with my department heads and say, you know, are we better off not bringing this position in-house? Fourth, how does the organization benefit? Sometimes the community's not gonna benefit, but the organization will. I'd say things like administrative help, I don't think that the, you know, average Windsor resident would necessarily appreciate bringing on administrative help, but I could see other organizations could be a lot more efficient, and how everybody else does their jobs better. And then finally, you know, can we qualitatively onboard the people? So as we look at some of these requests, and some departments ask for so many folks, I thought, well, God, you know, even if I said, yes, you can have all of them, can you qualitatively bring this many people into your organization? And not burn your staff out by training and bringing people on and doing it right? And then the only other thing that I consider, and it's not really a reason to tell somebody no, but it is a concern, which is, where are we gonna put them? You know, like in Town Hall next year, as we start to add staff, I'm thinking, my gosh, where do these people go? You know, so, you know, I think we need to have a deeper discussion about facilities and facilities planning, I don't want to have that right now, I'm just saying, you know, that, as we start to consider that ongoing need to add staff, I think where they go is gonna matter a lot as well. So starting out with the nineteen that I'd say made the cut for me as far as discussing with the staff, I would, we, I'd prefer not to get into a lot of detail tonight on any of these, just because each department head is gonna present their own kind of request and the personnel and where they're gonna fit. I'd like to let them carry their own water and make their own case, if the board has any questions on those. But as you can see, you know, I kind of green-lighted, let's see, one, five, six, seven, there's seven and a half in the Police Department. That includes splitting a school resource officer, that was based on the presentation that the board had last week. We have one new CSO, an investigator detective, four new patrol people, and then one records clerk for Public Works. So it'd be, as part of the reorganization, the Director of Public Services, so that'll be one of the positions that goes in. And then adding some administrative help at Public Works for planning, and planning and engineering, it would just be the Director of Community Development as part of the reorganization. Parks, Recs and Culture, there's two in there, we have a rec coordinator for events and sponsorships, as well as Facility Maintenance Tech. I'm requesting an administrative analyst, although he'd be housed under the Town Manager, but it would actually work for planning, would work for the Attorney's Office, would work for finance, basically, everybody in Town Hall would get that help. We're recommending one utility tech to help with locates for the water and sewer, two new folks in IT full-time, and one facility manager. And then for the part-time folks, really, it would be bringing back a dishwasher at the rec center, reclassifying two facility specialists from thirty to forty hours a week, and reclassifying one GIS person to full-time from part-time, as well as bringing on an intern. As far as the folks that didn't make the cut, there's kind of a variety of reasons here, again, there's another, I think, nineteen that, you know, kind of based on those lenses that I said before, as far as can we afford them? Which is one of the biggest reasons that most of these didn't make the list, but other ones, you know, looking at the overall community benefit, overall organizational benefit, et cetera. So I don't know if you guys have any questions about any of these individually, but as you can see, and I tell you this, I think that probably at least fifty percent of this list would be something I'd be talking to the board about in 2020. So, you know, just as if our revenues continue to increase, the community continues to grow, there wasn't any requests on this list that I didn't think had merit, they all had merit, these were just, you know, fell a little bit below the cut line for me. But I think that there's still a big need for a lot of these, that, does anybody have any questions on this list?
And benefits are built into all your calculations, Chris?
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many people are in IT currently? Two or three?
No, five, yeah, five and a half, yep. So the two that are getting green-lighted, one is what we call a security analyst, is again, that's really somebody to take a look, to make sure that we're being smart with our backups, with our security that's built in, really take a critical look at our systems and make sure that we're staying one step ahead of the bad guys outside of the town. The second one is just another analyst position, so it's basically just, when I looked at the work orders from Corinne, I mean, it's just, the amount of work going through is really overburdening that staff, so those are the two. the, the amount of work going through is, is really, uh, overburdening that staff, so, so those are the two, but yeah, it's five and a half right now.
And do you want us to save questions for when those-
No, you, you can, if, if, really if you have specific ones for what's being recommended, I could try to do it, but I'd say that each department and division are gonna come and present those. So, like, for example, like, I don't wanna answer a question about the police department, chief's not here, and, uh, but if you have any questions for ones that didn't make the cut, I'd say now's the perfect time to, to go through those.
Well, I just have a question, when you say five and a half for the technology, the information department, that includes the two that are being requested?
No, no-
We add five plus-
Yeah, we, we have five and a half.
Okay.
Uh, we would add two more full-time, and then, um, also, a, a little bit more than that, Mayor, um, we would take that, the point five, which is GIS, right now we have basically one point five GIS. Um, we're requesting to take that other point five up to two, have two full-time, cause just the workload is definitely merits that. And the second is, they'd like to bring on an intern as well.
What is the GI, maybe this, I'm too nuanced, what are they doing, like, are they working with the planning department when they create their mapping, like?
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of planning and engineering stuff, as we're adding infrastructure and, and building these layers in.
When we get a subdivision going in, we go out and record what's going in there, and then put it in our database, so, when the time comes, God forbid, we have to, we have an emergency there. We have an up-to-date record of where everything is located.
Cause I see what's online, and it, it's kinda like public-facing stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Really cool, but I'm just wondering, there must be way more that goes on that isn't on our website and public-facing.
Oh, yeah, uh, to, just to get the public-facing part, is, it's like a tip of the iceberg kinda thing.
Yeah.
You know, we, we have a lot of, a lot of the Public Works guys help gather information, Parks guys do. And, uh, you know, to get what you see at the tip of the iceberg out-facing, there's a ton more work to, that, that goes in.
Like, would they be managing the town's assets, it's like, I think at one point you're trying to put all the stop signs or every sign in there?
Yeah.
They, uh, to speak to what they do, I think for Parks and for Public Works, in terms of cartography, that's exactly your point, they, they manage, uh, with our staff, where trees are placed, where buildings are at. Uh, on the rec side, you'll see a slide when I, when I talk about recreation, we've plotted every single house for every child for every sport. And we have the same thing for the rec center, uh, members, so if we see a neighborhood that doesn't have a lot of activity, we can market for that specific neighborhood if we want to. We can understand whether people are coming from Greeley, or Fort Collins, or some other place, just with the help of GIS.
A- and so, um, I was talking to Scott Tomitich last week, and, and he's hoping that, e- even if, if we, we add this other point five and get to two, uh, that we're able to, to use more departmental resources, so we have, like, Parks kinda helping, keeping their own data up. Cause you, as you can imagine, we can measure everything, we could have everything in there, so it's a bit overwhelming, so I think to get that workload to be manageable for two people, we're gonna need, um, a little bit more leadership in each department, and maybe have somebody who's at least qualified to update that our GIS and input some of this data in.
Cause I think we're demanding more data, more information, justification, same with the public, so it's-
Yeah, Google Earth kinda ruined everybody right now, we can see everything, and so it's-
We expect it.
But, but Dean's right, you know, in the end, if we have a, a waterline break, it's pretty nice to know where that waterline is. Um, and, and right now, so much of this stuff is in people's heads, like where these different valves are, and it's just not a way to do business. Especially when you have, uh, you know, snow on the ground, and you, you can't find anything, it's really nice to have that, that GIS data point where you can go right to it.
Shane, can you go back to the previous?
Sure.
Where in the IT, cause I'm assuming it would fall under IT, is the cybersecurity component that you said that you wanna-
Oh, oh, that's, um, this is a slide beforehand, so it's the IT technical, or IT security analyst?
Okay.
So that's right here.
Okay. You know what's the difference between these two slides again?
Well, it's, um, when you hit the next one, this is, um, part-time, got, you know, kinda reclassification, so it's not, um, e- either adding a part-time position, or reclassifying from part-time to full-time.
Can we get copies of these slides?
Yeah, we don't have copies of any of this.
We have-
Yeah.
I mean, well, in the little format.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do your readers help you with that slide?
They do. So does my magnifier on my phone.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And get on my phone and zoom in.
Okay. Yeah, absolutely, we can get your question, yes.
And just wanting to make sure on, on the high level, uh, so in these, these two slides, where you have part-time, the prior slide, uh, was the, uh, you had one point two million here, and then
Ninety-eight.
Three thousand, and one point three million. And then, so if I look at all expenditure breakdown personnel, we go from fourteen million to seventeen-six, so we would be adding this one point three as far as the budget for twenty-nineteen.
But that doesn't, that doesn't include those other two positions that we talked about last week.
I think what you're asking here is, in addition to the seventeen that's showing on the budget now, are we going to add these two slides?
Oh, I'm assuming though that the increase between-
No, it's already in there.
Yeah, it's in there.
And something more, right?
Yeah, there's merit pay included in there.
Yeah, and, and I've got that in, um, a couple of slides from here.
Okay.
But does that include, that doesn't include what we're looking at for a community development director?
No, no, it's, that's in there, um, so-
In that, in this one right here?
Yes, so that is under, um, planning, so you see about halfway down, Director of Community Development. Begins April first, and then, um, so, so this budget, as presented at, tonight, um, this still has the idea that we would start that, um, Director of Public Services later in the year. I, I heard from the board last time that you wanted us to accelerate that, so it's not reflected in the budget that way right now, just cause the budget was already prepared.
Oh, so that October first means?
Yeah, so, that's right, so, so that's, that's what the budget number is, but again, um, hearing the board last time, and I understand that you want us to accelerate that. We can certainly do that, and just reflect that in the budget, i- it wou- it wouldn't be that material of a difference, but, um, the budget was already kinda prepared, it was a little bit too late after that meeting to redo this.
But does that mean that Director of Public Services, though, would approximately be four times that amount, as the annuals vary?
Yep, so the, um, total budget sheet, yeah, I think we had, um-
Yeah, hundred and sixty thousand, cause that's only one of the-
That's right, so we have the, um-
We have, yeah, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-four dollars for all three of those.
Yes, that's right, so we, we have the, the range, um, that we discussed last week, is, is basically pegged at a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That, that's kinda the, the mid-range where they would be, um, for salary, yeah, so the, this is kinda, right now it reflects that three months, or the, uh, nine-month salary.
Can you explain the town manager's administrative analyst, what the position is?
Yep, sure, so, uh, it's just a lot of the, um, kind of administrative help, you know, we don't really have the administrative help, and it's not, again, just in my office, it's in, um, planning, it's in finance, it's in legal. It's, it's throughout Town Hall, it's just kinda having that higher level, kind of executive assistant to just go, and whether that's taking in, in, in balancing credit card bills, or booking things, or, or maybe constituent callbacks, if everybody's busy, it's just kinda that, that, that help. Um, so that salary, um, reflects, obviously wages and benefits, I think that we had the mid-range for that salary at fifty-four thousand. So it looks bigger, like wow, an assistant free, no, I think that, that, the mid-range salary peg was fifty-four thousand.
Now, forgive me for bringing this up, but how does that differ from Kelly Hooteling's role right now? I mean, I'm not trying to make it specific, but I, I don't know that we necessarily know what her role is, and what you just explained is what I thought she already did, was that kinda stuff, that's all.
Right, no, she's been, um, overseeing communications, um, she's been, um, since Patty left, she's been overseeing, um, community, or, uh, customer service. Um, she's, um, takes care of any of the constituent feedback we get on the manager forums. Um, she's been doing in kinda special project work for me, so I'd say the work that she does is a lot higher level than, than what this position is.
I'm not trying to get into the weeds on that.
No, no, it's-
I'm just trying to differentiate the two different positions.
Sure, it's fair. Um, so, again, um, request not approved, um, so we had three positions in finance, um, we had, um, six more in the police department. Um, for Parks, Rec, and Culture, I think the equivalency is, let's see, one, two, um, three and a half, almost four positions. Um, uh, one mechanic, uh, two more in IT, uh, communications coordinator, and a facility tech. So, again, um, almost nineteen positions there.
The only thing that pops out as you're talking about the IT, is someone focused on it, was the cybersecurity thing feels like one of those things typically outsourced, only because it's an ever-changing world of cybersecurity.
Right.
And, I mean, I suppose you need a coordinator internally to deal with those external-
Right, a- and I tell you, that is, um, when I talked to Corinne about that, cause we talked about that, and she said, well, jeez, we could have somebody come in and do a security assessment for us, and pay a consultant, whatever, you know, fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars to do that. But again, then who's gonna implement that, who's going through and working through that? So, um, her argument was, we're better off bringing that person in-house, not ha- only having them do that assessment, but, but drive that change, and make sure we're keeping up with stuff. Versus a one, one-off deal where, you know, a year later, where are you sitting? So, um, but again, she'll be here, and so you can ask her those more specific questions, in the IT deal. Any other questions about requests not approved? Okay. Um, so, benefit changes for this year, I've got too many sheets down here. Um, so for medical, it reflects a four percent increase, um, but one thing that is different this year is, we're gonna offer a second plan. Um, we were able to work through our existing provider, CEBT, and, uh, they also offer a Kaiser Permanente HMO, which is actually less expensive than our current plan. And so, as we blend these two and give employees the option of which plan to use, um, the cost as far as how much more it'll be for the town, really depends on who opts into that. Um, so, if, if we did, um, if half the employees chose Kaiser, the other half chose our existing plan, the increased cost to the town would only be two thousand dollars next year, cause Kaiser's less expensive than our current plan. Um, if only twenty-five percent of people, uh, went to Kaiser, and seventy-five percent stayed with our current plan, which is probably more realistic, uh, the, the delta for the town would be forty-one thousand dollars. And then, um, if nobody went with Kaiser, and everybody stayed with our current plan, the increase would be eighty thousand.
And who's our provider?
Uh, well, we're with CEBT, um, and so that's, it's almost like SIRSAP, but for health insurance. Um, they provide, um, eh, kind of an insurance pull from municipalities around the state. And then, they're able to bring in, um, different plans inside of that, into their suite, so we've had, um, like an EEO plan, which is just a, an offering, and, and we-
Did we look outside of that, I mean, I just know that Weld County used to have Cigna, I believe it was, and they just moved to Aetna. And actually, their insurance is decreasing this year.
Is it?
Yeah, because they felt, I mean, because apparently they got a better plan with Aetna.
Right, so, so we did, I mean, um, so Kaiser is less expensive than our, than our current plan, and be less expensive for the employees, as well as for the town. So I do think that we're gonna have some utilization there. Um, and, um, I, I don't know if you wanna explain more about, um, Willows Tower, Wad- Watson, or CEBT?
Yeah, that's, Shane was on the right track there, it is like, uh, health insurance, in a, in a SIRSAP kinda way. I know that school district here has the same agent and the same, uh, plan that we have, not the exact same, but they use them as well. Uh, we had, they've been doing, CEBT's has been good about giving us, uh, money back for our wellness program, in the way of like, a, a full month of, uh, what do they call it, ho- premium holiday, and that kinda thing, so, uh, we haven't, we haven't really gone out to bid on that in a number of years, because we've, we've gotten manageable increases each year, you know, four percent. I think the last time we went out to bid for health insurance, and I don't recall who we, we were with at that time, I wanna say maybe Blue Cross or something. They were, they came back to us with a thirty-five percent increase, and we said, yeah, I don't think so. So, that's how we ended up, uh, coming across CEBT.
Yes?
Can I put my health insurance hat on?
Please do.
You know, imagine the one with the little green visor, uh, here, so.
Um, my question is, I thought there was something you had said, though, leading up to the, something over the summer about there being an HSA plan that was gonna save a bunch of money, because that was gonna be the recommended altern- you know, alternative, et cetera.
Uh, I, I don't think I said that.
Which requires a lot of education for employees to realize how that can benefit them, but it could also save the town a lot of money.
I, I, I read in, uh, the, um, letter, the transition letter, transmit a letter to the board last year. Um, my predecessor talked about an HSA plan, um, I, I don't know what happened to that intent, but I'll tell you, I didn't know the town was pursuing that until I read his last letter, and so, um-
I re- I remember that discussion last year, and then we said, I think we said we were gonna look into it for this year. And then Kelly left, and Patty left, and then Cheryl Lynn left, and so it's been, just kinda caught in the switches.
Yeah, so, so, so nobody's been working on that HSA.
Yeah.
They left cause we didn't have an HSA plan.
Yeah, right.
But what I'm hearing-
Most, most places do anymore, I mean, those have been on the market for twenty years now, so.
It, but it sounds like, I mean, this is open enrollment now, so we're not, we can't do anything for this year.
Right, well, a- and we did, we did talk, um-
There's an administrative analyst who could perhaps spend some time, and still looking at the-
Right, well, well, we did talk, uh, i- in the last meeting with CEBT, just about how hard would it be to add a third option? You know, the town's only had one option, and so I think it's a nice big step to offer a second option, give people some choice, it's a less expensive option for the town. Um, but I think as far as having a third option, having an HSA, I mean, we just, in my last employer, we just added that kind of option for employees. I think there's no harm if you have an opt-in, and, and you can incentivize it right, and give people that option. If you're twenty-three years old and single, you may say, jeez, that HSA would work a lot better for me, I'd rather have-
Well, but every insurance carrier, I don't know about CEBT, but everybody, every Kaiser, I mean, everybody was offering an HSA option, which-
Right.
Like I said, I'm not pointing, eh, with the right education, it makes a lot of sense, even if you've got pre-existing conditions and everything, on how you can save the money, and roll over your savings account from year to year versus use it or lose it.
Right.
So.
No, I, 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 I hear you, and, and, um, now I think we're hopefully stabilized now, and we can look at adding a third option on for, for next year, but right now, that's not a part of this week.
There's just one comment, I also work in the health insurance industry, that, that, I agree that it's probably too late to do anything this year. Just, but next year, as, as we're staffed up, and we have that extra administrative help, it's probably a time to do a kind of a deep dive. There's been a lot of changes in the health insurance industry over the last few years. Um, I looked up CBT while everyone was talking, it looks like it, it's Colorado Employer Benefit Trust, so it's a multiple employer trust for public institutions. So it looks like a good fit for municipalities, but it wouldn't hurt us next year to just maybe have somebody sit down as a priority, and take a closer look, and see what else is out there. But for right now, this looks like it's, you know, what we have, it's no time to change.
Is this, um, contribution, that's, that's gonna stay, the eighty-nine and eleven percent?
Yes.
Cause it made it sound like in the packet that was increasing four percent with the split.
Well, well, so the, the increase-
Does it not gonna go to ninety-one and thirteen?
Mm, mm, no, ma'am, the, the, the four percent is aggregated for both. So, eh, the, the overall cost is going up by four percent, and then that's gonna be split eighty-nine percent town share, eleven percent employee.
Is that pretty typical for municipalities, that sharing?
How you, um, it's, it's really close to where I came from, I came from a ninety-ten. Um, and I think it just depends on, um, my observation was, in two thousand and eight, the municipalities had too many staff, and, you know, didn't wanna lay off. The first thing they did is started dumping those medical benefits. So, I think you would see plans that are less generous, I think you may see plans that are more generous. Um, I think with a, a four percent increase, and, and one thing that, that I didn't mention is, when we met with CEBT, um, they had a, um, savings from last year, they ended up buying their third-party insurance for less money. And so, we're gonna get back, um, about five hundred dollars per person insured. So the town's gonna get, um, from CEBT about sixty-five thousand dollars, a check coming in, uh, pretty quickly, so I think that really, the, the real aggregate cost for the town this year is gonna be pretty flat, we may actually even be a little bit less than we were last year.
And where does that check go, this, does it just go back into?
Yep, we'll, we'll just apply it back into the, to the health insurance. Um, so it'll be, I mean, general fund, but eh, I think we just apply it back towards this, for the most part. Um, so, uh, that's one, and then two, I think that, you know, our benefits package, eh, eh, now when people say, well, jeez, I wanna resign, you know, Cursey wants to offer me more money. We go through, and we not only take their hourly offer, I mean, we'll do a side-by-side comparison, ensure benefits, retirement, vacation, we show everything. So, um, I think it's nice to be here, I wouldn't wanna let that slide, cause it's, it's just money out of their pocket, and makes us a little bit less attractive as an employer.
But I assume the salary survey we do would also take into account the benefits and the sharing ratios, et cetera. Otherwise, it's apples and oranges.
That's right. Well, eh, eh, so the salary survey won't, eh, won't include like vacation and that kind of stuff, but I think it would do salary, salary and, um, like, uh, insurance. Okay, um, dental, uh, the budget reflects an eight percent increase in costs. Um, we did switch providers this year. Um, I think we, we went to Delta Dental, um, and real numbers, that, that numbers eleven thousand seven hundred dollar increase. And I think that dental's gone up every year for the past few years. Uh, vision, uh, we're not projected to go up at all. The source slide is actually better on the next one. So for, um, SIRSAP, they, they do both our, um, uh, property casualty, eh, our property and our casualty, eh, as well as our workers' comp. Um, we did have a couple of workers' comp claims this last year. And so basically, those take three years to go off. So once you have workers' comp claims, they show up for three years, uh, whenever you get a renewal. So, um, the, the total aggregate for, for services up thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and then the breakdown, the, the total spend would be, uh, one-seventy-two for workers' comp and our property casualty is just under three hundred thousand next year. And then, uh, merit changes. So, um, eh, it's, it's hard to, it would have been nice to have the wage study done prior to this budget. So we just knew, Jesus, our wage study implementation, here's our number. We don't have that, but you know, I think we still want to budget for that. Last thing we wanted to do is do a wage study and have people say, oh geez, you know, look, I'm eligible for however much money. And if we don't have any money budgeted for that, I think it would just be, we'd be working against ourselves. So I'm asking for kind of a, a, a pool. Um, four percent would go to, um, uh, wage study implementation. Uh, so that would be aggregated over the whole organization. So we may, we may see when we get, um, through this, that public works is actually as close to seven percent based on where they are. Parks is overpaid by two or three percent based on what I see from Eric. Boom, not really, um, but, but, but we would aggregate. Oh, all right. These guys spend more money at the dollar store. I think that's half the budget.
He's got lots of gold on those first two rows over there.
So, so that four percent would be aggregated, uh, townwide, and then we'd have our three percent merit pool. So it's just shown in here, seven percent. Um, of course, we already have the, the police debt plan, so that's five percent. That, um, patrol and sergeants just automatically jump up. Um, and so the, the other police, the lieutenants, um, our admin staff, anybody else in the police department, chief, for example, he would be a part of that wage study. But our patrol sergeant wouldn't be, because we've already got them addressed with the step plan.
Is that, is that a forever five percent step? Or is there a contract term or?
Is there a cap? I think it caps it after seven years, seven or eight years, there's a cap. But, um, but I'll say that it's going to probably just up over time too. So, I, I don't think it's going to ever really have.
I think it's still subject to merit though. I mean, it's, I don't, no? I thought that he had some kind of.
This is what they get in lieu of that.
That's right.
This is what drives airlines bankrupt every ten years. Everybody gets.
But that seven, but that seven percent may not all get used.
Well, um.
I mean, there may be, I mean, I mean, depending on what comes in from the SOT study and even the three percent may not, depending on what comes in, right? I mean, we're budgeting the maximum that could go out, but that doesn't mean it's a hundred percent all.
Right, I mean, I, I feel, I would be surprised if the, um, wage study didn't drive four percent. I mean, it would, I, it'd be pleasantly surprised, but I would expect that that would go. And then you're right, eh, with a three percent merit pool, it would be, eh, that would be it.
I think in your cover letter, you said if there is excess, you would use it.
Well, eh, and, and that's what I wanted to talk to the board about. So, um, I, I think it's a very low chance that the, um, wage study doesn't come in under four. But if it did, if we did the wage study and it's three and a half percent, would the board be comfortable with us using just the remainder and doing the merit with that?
If it comes in above four, are you, are you?
Well, no. Well, eh, well, eh, we would have to do it over two years. I would want to have at least a minimum of three percent for COLA, or not COLA, I'm sorry, for merit. I wouldn't want to go below that. Um, so if it comes in over four, it would just be, we'd have a two-year plan. This is how we're going to address it in twenty nineteen, and this is how we'll address it in twenty twenty. Um, but if eh, if it did come in less than that, I, I just wanted to see if the board would be comfortable with using whatever that was, um, for the merit.
I have to wait and see what all those other requests are going to be and what we're all going to be looking at total budget-wise before, at least for myself, before I would say whether or not I would be comfortable with that.
Okay, fair enough.
When do we get that?
Sorry, Bob.
When, when does that come in, the wage study?
Well, it's, we just got started. So, um, the, the lady we're contracting with was doing other projects, so she just got started. Um, we're hoping to have that done by the end of the year. So I'm hoping before December thirty-first that, that we're done. And then we're going to need to go and call through that and then come up with our plan.
So we're going to approve the budget before you get?
That's right.
Might have to have a budget adjustment meeting somewhere. Um, have we historically had a three percent merit bucket?
It's been that way for a few, eh, I think the first year we did it, we had five percent. And then when we got into the recession years, we put it at, I think, zero.
Yeah, it was frozen.
And then, eh, after the economy got better, rather than going up to five, we s, we put it at three. And I think it's been three for the.
But it has, but it has varied and, and, and just, just so you, the board knows that typically that percentage was approved and set by the board. It's a number that the board looked at, because typically, we were presented with whatever the numbers were in the, um, the going marketplace at that time, you know, like what, what other municipalities were doing. And that's how it was usually brought to us. And then usually, the board decided on whatever that percentage was.
The merit pay was input at three, but we've always approved it at three.
Well, yeah, and we've had discussions sometimes whether it should be two and a half. I mean, at one time, I think it was two and a half or something.
I think my first year in twenty twelve, it was four, and there was lots of discussion.
Yeah.
Lots of discussion. And then I think after that, it was just at three. But we always discussed it and.
Right.
Is this, is this COLA or merit, I assume?
It's merit.
Merit.
So each manager, they have the bucket of three percent, and the manager determines who gets how much, and someone may get four and somebody gets one?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Well, eh, it's capped at three though, right? I mean, if it's three percent.
The way we do it is like on our whole, the, the entire pool is capped at three percent. But eh, what you said, we, we make that pool available, and then everyone gets their review. Some people don't do as well as others. Somebody maybe gets a one, somebody gets a four, comes down to three.
Is, is there a COLA as well?
No.
No?
Okay, um, so then that's it for me. So do you have any other questions while I'm standing up here? And if not, I'll be right there, so.
Hey, I'm not sure where this would come in, Shane. It just, you know, everything that you guys have presented really shows, here's the budget we submitted. Here's what this does to our various funds. Here's the rationale for staff improvement, et cetera. All, all of that though is really, really dependent on the revenue projections as to how accurate they are. You know, you could, you could project revenues, that would make any budget look great with tons of reserves, so.
Sure.
At what point in this process do we dig a little deeper on some of the revenue projections and stuff like that?
Well, uh, we could, if you want to talk about, I mean, really, that's really, for, for Dean and I are Bailewic anyway. So if you want to talk a little bit about, I mean, I'd say, your meeting, well.
Oh, I, eh, but I'm not sure of the flow, and I certainly don't want to disrupt what was intended.
Right, well, well, eh, this is really, I mean, for, for Dean and I, really want to start you out at kind of thirty thousand foot in the overview. So if you have questions about like, why is sales tax number this, then, then, then we can talk about that.
Well, obviously, eh, okay, do you mind if I look at that? I looked at the general fund detail budget that, yeah.
Yeah, and which one? I mean, eh, they were all broken down or?
This is the one they sent us.
Oh, right here.
It's a lot of red all over the.
There is. This is the general fund budget breakdown that you gave.
Okay.
I think this is tended to be detailed, but on the revenue side, general fund revenue. Uh, taxes, you really have the four buckets, property, auto, sales, franchise. And I guess what seemed odd to me, and you know, Shane, you and I have had that conversation about property tax in particular. Now, those are the two big buckets, the property tax, sales tax. If you look at the trends going twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you had four point one million, five, five point four. And then projected five point nine in twenty eighteen. And in twenty nineteen, your revenues are almost a million dollars above that, but eight hundred thousand.
That was, goes back to one of the first slides that we did here tonight. The reason being that our assessed valuation went up, but we, and we kept our, our mill levy at the same level. So by the, the tide going up, I guess, on assessed valuation, that same mill levy will generate more, uh, property tax.
Two-year assessment, right?
Yes.
So they did it in seventeen? They replied.
Well, they, they, when, if someone's, if someone's house gets added in a current year, that, that gets included in our total assessed value. Then every couple of years, they'll go back and look at that same house and see whether the assessed valuation went up or down.
Sure.
So if, eh, there could conceivably be a year eh, that our assessed valuation goes down, and keeping the same mill levy will result in less property tax.
Sure. I understand, it just seems like, you know, eh, no, eh, no prior year, at least in this table from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, that we had a jump of eight hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, we had a couple of four hundreds in one year.
Yeah.
But yeah, this was a, this was a larger one.
Fifteen to sixteen is pretty large.
Wait, and so don't we get this number from the treasure?
We do, we get.
Yeah.
That's not really, that's not really a, a forecast. That's just straight math.
What it's going to be.
Yeah. Well, which is why you'll see like our, our, our projection for eighteen is right on the number of what we're, we're projecting we're going to receive, because it's, we get that data beforehand. We, we know what our assessed valuation is going to be in the taxable area. So it's, it's pretty, it's going to always be pretty spot-on.
Yeah, that, that's one of the easier ones, actually.
There's no guessing?
No.
Right.
The actual, okay, the actual objective, and then the sales tax, you and I had.
Sure, yeah, so I'll explain to the board. So, uh, historically, we've used a three-year rolling average. And so if you look at, eh, between fifteen and sixteen, our sales tax actually went up six point three percent from, from four point five to four point eight. Uh, when you look from sixteen to seventeen, it actually went up by eleven percent. If you look from seventeen to eighteen, right now, we're projecting that it's going to be up fifteen percent. But if you take, um, the previous three years, if you take eighteen, seventeen and sixteen, add them up, uh, you get sixteen million and change, you divide it by three. And so if we use our three-year rolling average, that would project next year at five point four million dollars, which would be twelve percent down from this year. And so to me, it's just, um, using a three-year rolling average makes sense with a lot of funds. But with sales tax, I'm like, well, eh, in what conceivable world, why would our sales tax be down twelve percent next year? You know, we have a lot of commercial projects coming online, we've seen a good, solid trend going up. So how can we project it conservatively, but, but realistically, you know? And if, if you're looking at five point four million dollars in, in sales tax, it's like, is that realistic? I don't think it is. So instead, we just used a, a forecast of five percent up from this last year. And that was basically just working through finance and saying, okay, what, what's still a real conservative number that, that we can bank on? So, so that's how that number went up. Again, it is a projection, it's not near as scientific as, um, property tax, but, um, and I think past performance is no way to predict what's going to happen in the future. It is a projection, it's an educated guess. Um, but I, I think that the Windsor's history and the revenue that's coming for sales tax bears out that projection. Especially knowing what's coming online, I'm just knowing we have the mill, we have the Village East, we have brands. Well, we have a lot of commercial things coming online currently.
Is there an over and under office pool as to whether you're five percent?
No, I, I would.
I'm just, I'm not allowed to enter, so.
Eh, 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 there is not. Eh, so again, it's not perfect, but the three-year rolling average is the same deal, it's not. So, did you have any questions or concerns about that?
No, I appreciate the answers, that's good.
Okay.
I have some revenue questions as well, since David started this. First one is, why is recreation revenue expected to be lower?
I can talk to that in my slide, I actually do. Uh, but just short and sweet, we've moved some things around, so that, that create that.
So there's revenue in other places?
Yes.
Yes.
And what are planning fees? How are they different than development fees?
Uh, but planning fees are more like if, if you come in to do a subdivision, you pay the town, that is those kinds of fees. So it's just the minor administrative things you do for different land use procedures.
Okay, my last question, maybe three parts. Why are we transferring money from the capital improvement fund? We've never done that before. A community rec center expansion fund, and that might be coming up, and also the community rec center fund. We've never had that come into the general fund, or have we?
That, that goes back to what I alluded to at, back at the start, that we took a harder look at who's doing what. Uh, you know, like, the folks here, they don't strictly work in the, the rec center fund. They do some general rec programming that we record in the general fund. So it's to kind of allocate their time, their salary and taxes and benefits.
So, so, for example, like for engineering, we have, um, a couple engineers that work, and they're basically staff for the capital fund. Um, they do all the designs, all they're doing is working all the time. But, um, I think historically, we've, we've taken, um, one-third of the money came out of sewer and water for them, one-third total, and two-thirds came out of general fund, is that right?
Probably, yeah.
Yeah, so instead of just doing kind of the, the generic, we'll just take anybody who's in the engineering department, you know, a sixth of their salary will pay with water, a sixth will be paid with sewer, and the rest will be paid with general fund. We actually took a look, said, okay, what does this engineer do? You know, I mean, eh, just going with that firm, the, the waters, um, the, the water resource officer wasn't set up to be paid out of water. You know, he was in engineering and he was an employee that was, was, only had one sixth of his salary being paid out of water. So we've just gone through, staff by staff, to say, okay, where does Miles work? Where does he spend his time? Um, what funds benefit? So it's really just trying to do an honest accounting, everybody's time. Um, and like I said in my budget memo, we want to go through and do this. I'd say a couple, like, probably every other year, go through and just do this assessment. Okay, because people do change over time as far as their workload and what they're doing. So eh, it's just, um, eh, but we had done, I think, some blanket, um, like the rec center had done kind of some blanket transfers to the general fund. Uh, but I just don't know, eh, I'm not sure how that was calculated. So, so that has happened in the past. I don't think that's happened with the capital fund, but it has happened with, with other funds. But I'm just not sure what metrics were being used to say, this should be three hundred thousand, that's four hundred or whatever. So, so this is just, um, not an exact science, but it was really a hard look, a position by position.
Yeah, because it shows zero all the previous years.
Well, I, I know that we had transfers from the rec center, because.
It was transferred from the general fund to the rec center.
Oh, well, well, that was a gift. I thought we also had, um, for the, um, facility stuff?
Yes, so there was from, from rec center to the facilities, which was a general fund.
Yeah.
Correct.
Because I totally agree with the concept. I don't want to turn this into a way to prop up the general fund for, for more salaries or whatever.
Right, well, you know, I, I get that. I, you know, before, eh, this was just, I mean, this is an analysis I've always done in places that I've worked. It's really going through employee by employee, because eh, it's easy to, um, I guess, just kind of charge things to general fund and let them go.
It's easy.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's not really equitable. And, and so, um, we saw a pretty big shift. I think it was a couple million dollars that I think had been charged to the general fund that really, you know, were just people parsed everywhere. You know, I'd say like a position like HR, you know, is it, should HR be one hundred percent general fund? You know, they're hiring people for water, they're hiring for sewer, they hire rec people, they do all, you know, for, with the rec center staffs up. I mean, they do a lot of different hiring, so should they only be paid out of one fund? Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the most unpolitically correct question of the evening.
Okay.
About the merit wage study. We do supplemental budget, you know, supplemental expenditures, the supplement, what am I, say supplemental? Could we, eh, is there a way to like do a placeholder for the wage study at seven percent or four in the three or whatever? But not have it approve when we approve the budget, but yet, assuming, once we have the wage study, you know, et cetera, it makes me a little apprehensive to approve something that we don't even know what it's going to come in at. But I'm completely in favor of doing a supplemental such and such on the first of the year in January or.
So I, I, I think a way to do that, I'd say if the board approves this, but I understand my instructions are to bring back and let you guys know kind of the results of the wage study. And you want to do that before we actually implement any kind of adjustments, that's fine, we can definitely do that. So I wouldn't say it would be a supplemental budget, it would just be approved to be in there, but understanding that you don't want us to actually put that in place until we present to the board, we can do that.
And, and it's not a strike, I just, we're, we're, we're approving something. We don't, we wouldn't know necessarily what that's going to come in at.
Right, well, I know, I, I, I wish it was done as well. I'd rather just know what the number is, I totally agree.
I just think it's a fair. I just think it's a fair. Maybe it is approved as a as, because essentially what you're talking about is approved as a placeholder. But I I just, I think that, not that we're trying to kibosh whatever the study says necessarily or anything like that. I think it just, it makes me apprehensive to approve it and with what we're talking about, given that we don't have that completed yet by the time we're ready to approve the budget.
Sure. Yeah, that's fair.
However, that looks, I mean, like I said, I mean, what's fair is fair. We're not trying to.
I get it. Okay.
Could be higher though, right?
I I that that's my fear. I I guess I hope for the best and plan for the worst.
Well, and if it is, would that then warrant a supple- if if that was what the board would do?
No, I I think if it's if it takes more than four percent to implement, what I, the plan that I would um propose to draw up would say, okay, this is our two-year rollout for the plan. This is how we plan on doing with the four percent we have for this year, and then this would be how we'd like to address it in twenty twenty. And and I've already told staff that, you know, I think if, um, let's say that the wage study came back and said, um, somebody that works for Dean in finance merits a dollar an hour, and so does Dean. My inclination is gonna be to give to the staff person, because somebody who makes twenty dollars an hour needs that dollar a lot more than somebody who makes forty-five an hour. You know, so um, I always think you always implement, you start at the the frontline and you work your way up. So um, if we don't have that, it's gonna, I'm gonna probably have, my leadership team is gonna be a little bit grumbly with me. No, they're not. They've got it.
Well, and I'm cannot, I I think that that decision on how it's implemented is with you. I just, the numbers and what they come in at, et cetera. That's where my apprehensiveness comes in, and I I haven't talked to anybody else on the board about it.
No, I I get it. Well, it's, I I think it'd be completely appropriate for us to come back after we've done the wage study and during a work session.
Because how long has it been since we've done one of these wage studies?
Couple of years.
Couple of years.
Two, two?
At least, yeah.
At least. Yeah, and and they really should, especially in this market, every two years is about as long as you wanna go. If you're in a slower market, you can push them out four or five years, but uh, in this market, I mean, we had um, I'm I'm trying to think of all the people that we've lost in my tenure that have gone to another municipality. Most of them that that we've lost have gone to a neighboring jurisdiction. And most of them that we've hired have been from a neighboring jurisdiction. So it's it's good to be really competitive there, because if not, it's, I mean, the cost of of losing good people and and bringing new people on and training them, it's just, there there's big organizational costs.
I I completely understand the methodology. It's just the apprehensiveness of not really knowing what that number is.
Okay, well, you guys will get that. We already know what we're meeting for in January. That's great. Thank you.
I have one more question about, in each fund, there uh, or each department, there's something called contract services? Some of them seem pretty high relative to the other expenses. Do you know what that is? Is it specific? Is it a transfer?
Yeah, it it would be specific to the department.
Each department has contract services that.
Right, yeah, yeah. So for for example, like in planning, contract services may be our transportation engineer. It could be our um planning contractor that we're bringing on. Um, so it it. Right, well, right. So it just kind of depends. It is departmental specific.
It's unique to the department. Okay.
It is.
That's good, thank you.
Shane, the the new positions that you put that we're approving, are have those already been kind of run against this salary study? Are the numbers you quoted reflected?
No, no, the the numbers are in because we don't have the salary survey yet, so the numbers we have in are actually, um, we benchmark commit the mid-range. So if we say that a job, um, if the starting salary is fifty thousand, mid-range is sixty, and the top is seventy, we budget at the sixty thousand, think they'd be hired at the mid-range. So I wouldn't say that they're salary survey proof, but they're 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 hedged a little bit, because we 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 try to put it into where thinking, well, geez, we're probably not gonna hire people this high. It'll be at this level or less. Um, but there there's no way to know, because we haven't had the salary survey, so there could be a couple of positions. We say, geez, we're really off in IT. You know, they merit twelve percent up, and we need to do an adjustment for these new people, because they're already out of range. Um, so that could happen. Uh, but um, having this done so early in the year, hopefully, we're not bringing a lot of people along in the wrong rate. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna be five steps away.
Hey, look at the gold medal. Gold medal finalists.
Turn over, Hank, please.
So Taryn Kendra just came out from Indianapolis and accepting our gold medal finalist, so pass it around. I do want to let you know that uh, next Monday's meeting, a member from the NRPA will be here to actually present this to the mayor and board. Uh, my only request is, don't let David hold it.
He's gonna laugh.
Or sneeze on, yes. Where's the uh, money necklace?
It's in my pocket. I'll put it on in a second.
Oh, is that part of your, I'm sorry.
Part of the shtick.
Okay, all right.
Miami Hurricanes.
Give me just a second. Also pass out.
Pass out. Here's the pancake with the plaque.
That's quite handy.
Right through the tray.
Thanks, appreciate it. Yes, you're welcome. Did this have to have its own seat on the plane?
Sounds like a big case, like the Stanley Cup.
Stanley Cup. David, oh, okay, David, you wanna make it next? It's for you, mate, with the boss. Find it in your pocket. Boy, here, sorry. Sorry, dumped them on the floor.
All right, mayor and board, uh, tonight, we're gonna talk about the proposed budget for the bulk of the Parks Recreation and Culture Department. Uh, really, tonight, we'll cover everything related to uh, recreation. So we'll talk about uh, aquatics, recreation that's in a general fund. The uh, recreation center, community events, those kind of things. But before we get started, I wanted to, you know, over the last few weeks, and I I think it's occurring to me just because I'm, as I as I get older, but, you know, uh, budget oftentimes feels like a grind. And, you know, over the years, I've actually come to like budget, and it's become fun, even though I can tell you probably why Dean's gray. And I just, I drive Vicky crazy, and uh, you know, Tara and Kendra and other people in our department have been working for many months. Uh, and really, budget is a is a uh, year-round cycle anymore, but ultimately, for me, it has become fun, and we will talk, you know, we've been pretty serious discussions already to start this meeting off uh, tonight in terms of where we're going as a town. Uh, but I wanted to remind everybody that it is fun. So with that, I wanted to share with you this slide, and just remember that as we go along, budgeting is a fun opportunity to understand how it's gonna impact uh, our community going forward. So. And also, you know, like Paul likes to crack that we have tons and tons of employees, and we're all overpaid in the Parks and Recreation Department. So we like to have a little bit of fun with it.
No, I I I was just alluding to you. I think the rest.
Okay, and you'll notice that I did wear green, although it's hot, so I I took my double green off today's today's money day, so. But Barry has his red pen. But I would like to, again, thank staff for all of their hard work. The what you're gonna see tonight really is what's on the screen. Uh, as you know, staff and yourself spent a lot of time talking about strategic plan. Town has its mission and vision. Uh, so uh, what you'll see in the screens for not only tonight, but when we come back and talk about the parks, Parks Fund as well, is a philosophical approach of towards our budget. To make sure that we're meeting this town's strategic plan and their goals, as well as the mission and vision, and the mission and the vision of the department itself, and you can see those on the screen. And as we go through tonight, every slide that you'll see really is kind of laid out like it is on the right. So you'll see a highlight talking about two thousand and eighteen, staffing, if there's an impact there, significant changes year to year, i.e. from eighteen to nineteen. Financial review, just a kind of a ten thousand-foot view. These are the revenues, these are expenses, this is the change, and kind of a quick, short and sweet why did that occur? Um, and then if there's a capital impact, as I alluded to earlier, if you have any questions on recreation-specific capital projects, be glad to talk about them. Uh, so we won't talk tonight about parks. That, I believe, is on the fifteenth. So, uh, anybody have any questions as we get going? So, community events, um, this one, as you can imagine, is just a a growing uh, piece of our program in terms of the outreach we do to the community. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, we did about fifty-five events. We're up to eighty-eight this year. We saw a thirty-two percent increase in attendance, uh, up a little over twenty thousand people attending community events. So that is uh, can be Harvest Festival, it can be uh, moving in the park, concerts in the park, all the special events, the five Ks that we run, Wine Fest, Taste of Windsor, of those kind of things. So um, we've had a really successful year. I think the uh, the events that we do and we put on is part of what the quality of life is here in Windsor, and why people love to come to Boardwalk Park and the other parks, uh, to enjoy a variety of events. You know, kind of give them uh, really why they love to win, to live in Windsor feel. So as Shane alluded to, we have asked for uh, a new recreation and events sponsorship coordinator. The big burden for staff really is from May through December, and you see on the screen, it talks about staff burden, uh, and employee departure and burnout. I wanna talk about that briefly. I arrived in October of two thousand and fifteen. We were just coming out of uh, nearing the end of that year's special events, and that was contracted out through a local company. Uh, the community, we had a a manager of culture who kind of assisted um, through the winter months. He departed the town, uh, and I gave, we 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 made some analysis, because I can tell you internally, uh, contracting that out was a nightmare for staff. It seems like a great plan, but it didn't really work. I gave that duty to Tara. Uh, she took it, as she has with everything, but I'll tell you, it about burnt her out that season. Uh, in the interim, we hired Luke Bolinter. He came in and did a fabulous job managing culture as well as special events, continued to grow. But one of the reasons and one of the key reasons Luke left was for money and less work. So it goes to what's on what's on the board. And so part of what I'd like to talk about tonight, and and the reason why this request is there, is we really would like to have a dedicated, and I'd not even like to have, we need, a dedicated person to s- uh, special events and sponsorships. We do not want to go through every two years of turnover and burnout, and people quit and move on, and then I say, hey, Terry, wanna do something else? And or some, anybody else on staff. Uh, so the other piece to this is on is on the sponsorship side. Luke and Tara, in the last two years, without any asking, without any prodding, have raised, and and quite honestly, without any dedicated time, really reaching out and beating on doors, have raised a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars in the last year in sponsorships. If you go back to two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, that was about five thousand and seven thousand. So they've put a little bit of effort in it, and look at the results. We are very certain that this position with some dedicated effort can at least raise about three-quarters of their salary. So the other piece, and Shane mentioned it earlier, he asked the question, can we contract this out? And we looked at that. So you see the comparison on the left and then on the right. The cost to hire staff is forty-two thousand, then plus the benefits. We run eighty-eight eighty-eight events, and if this person goes out and raises half of their salary, three-quarters of the salary, more than that, we keep all of it. Uh, this also includes day of labor for those events. So for example, we've got a seasonal right now that when we have an event, she goes out and she's at the event every every time we have it. Maybe she's not there for the whole ten hours, but she has to go in and check in. Did you get your event started all right? Is everything going okay? Do you need anything? And then come back and check in, or she spends the the entire day there. On the right is an example of a local municipality very close to here, who this year signed an agreement with an outside firm for five events. So they market it and get the, do all the event prep, seventy-five thousand dollars. If they get any sponsorships, the town there gets eighty-five percent, that group keeps fifteen. And it does not include day of labor or graphics for marketing. So again, it makes a lot of sense to bring this person in-house, uh, have the dedicated uh, staffing, remove the cost of staff burnout, uh, remove hopefully the the desire for them to leave and move on for bigger and better things, um, and have that dedicated person to events and and not contract it out. So, any questions?
Is the eighty-eight events the reason for the burnout? I mean, if we have one person that's doing.
It could be, um.
I I'm I'm, I guess the devil's advocate in this, is if we were to contract it out, which alleviates any burnout, because obviously, it's contracted, it's a contracted service. It may not be eighty-eight events that are done necessarily, so I understand that there may be an additional cost, but it may alleviate the turnover due to burnout.
It, I think that's a small possibility, but when you look at the the events that we have currently, I I don't, not that we couldn't, but I don't see us eliminating concerts in the park, moving the park, Harvest Festival. We would have to then begin very seriously considering turning away XYZ five Ks. Um, every time someone comes and wants to do an event in our park, or a park that we have, uh, is an event.
Well, and and let me just jump into you, because we had, like with Luke, he's director of culture, and he did events. So he basically, this is this is spinning off that event side and making its own job. So he also was burdened with, you know, the 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 museum and overseeing the culture stuff, so, you know, I I I I think that, a- and, you know, you've got one person doing the coordination, like for for Harvest, it'd be nice, I think, to just have somebody who we had, a special events person overseeing that. But clearly, there's seventy-five other town employees pitching in, helping out. It's just one person coordinating.
So is the layman term for what you're talking about, is somebody that's like a marketing person to go get sponsorships, and that's like their job?
I would say that that's a portion of their job, probably maybe twenty-five percent. The rest of it is coordination. A great example is, we are currently today uh, seeking out and signing contracts for next year's concerts. Uh, we're deciding on what movies we're gonna show and reserving them. We're already taking, uh, I think, beginning of January one, so we're updating our website. We are taking uh, requests for special events uh, from the same people, as well as new people that want to have events in our facilities and parks. So it's probably seventy-five percent actual coordination and running, and then twenty-five percent dedicated, go knock on a on a door and seek out corporate sponsorships. And we've done really well with just a little bit of outreach, but most of the people have come to us.
I I think as our numbers grow and we get more and more of the community coming out, I think these, there's different businesses that wanna be a sponsor, because they really help get their name out there.
I have a request, and then Miles has a question, and I don't need it tonight, but can I maybe get a list of these, the eighty-eight events? I'd like to just, I mean, I think, I mean, I don't even know what they all are and what we all.
Absolutely.
Offer and and what we all have, and sometimes I get folks who want to create new events, but so it'd be good to see what we already have.
Right, it's, that refers to things like if we have like a five K race around the the lake on Saturday, it's, that's an event.
Uh, farmer's market, so how many Saturdays do we run?
Four months of that.
So four months of that.
So it's counting every concert series, it's counting.
Like beside one, if they count for twelve, put a twelve there, so I'll know, and this one, you know, so if it only ends up being a list of forty, I know where you came up with the eighty-eight, because this one has twenty of them.
It it is exactly as you described. So, um, for example, to your point, slightly self-inflicted potentially. We talked about it last year, we were doing ten concerts. We moved to twelve this year because of the longer summer, and had agreed that we would do twelve more next year to see if the longer summer mattered or not. If you're the folks that were on the board before, we talked about la- at last year's budget, that why should we stop summer concerts just because school goes back in? Not everybody has a kid in the high school or a kid in elementary school. So let's try two years of twelve concerts, extended summer type of thing, and see whether attendance matters or not. So what we'll see in next year's uh, attendance is, we we have a normal school year. We're actually a little bit of a shortened summer. And we'll have twelve concerts, but if we see attendance the same, then that tells us that the public wants it. If we see those last two concerts, the attendance plummets, then that tells us, you know, what it really is about, it's driven around the school year, as opposed to what what we that maybe not have kids in the school, school system term summer.
This looks like a new position. Luke's salary was in the culture division, is that what?
Correct, and we just hired a person uh, to fill that role. That was Laura. Correct, so she's doing the culture piece. This is to separate it, as Shane was alluding to.
And if someone comes to do a five K race or a wine festival, are they paying for our coordinator?
They are paying for the rental, the impact of the park. Uh, if they come to the board, which some have, and I'll I'll mention that a little bit in a few seconds, um, you may say, we will reimburse you, so i.e. So I, they pay the Parks and Recreation Department. Then when they're done, they send you a bill out of your funds. You then pay them back. You reimburse them their fee. So for example, if it was a thousand dollar park rental, they pay us upfront and then you might reimburse them. There are other people that don't come to you and they just pay us the thousand dollars and they held their event.
And that park rental includes this position being there, this person?
That, that revenue does go towards the community events budget. And on that spreadsheet we'll send you, it's actually broken down. So, we've sorted it out that if they have come to you guys, we call that a sponsorship.
Right.
If it's something similar to Wine Fest or Harvest Festival, then we put a partnered event. And then there's a paid event. So it is broke down in that list of eighty-eight events, or it's, or it's a town event. So, that list does break that down.
And not just sponsorships that they might collect, they also are...
There's, there's some funds that are related to rentals and reimbursements.
Okay.
So how much money did the board waive like last year? Like how much?
So, we're in target to waive eighty-one hundred dollars in reimbursements. And then, and I'm approximating this, about twenty thousand dollars to the Harvest Festival. And so, so that's kind of where, where you're at. And I've talked about this for two previous years to you.
What did you say about the Harvest Festival?
About twenty thousand.
That we're going to give them?
We, we have in the past. It's what it's been for the last three years, the number has not changed.
For the special music artist on Saturday nights?
Correct. That doesn't count staffing, police, you know, like the parade or managing the events, setting it up during the day, any help that we give. That's just a financial checking hand. The, where was I going with Harvest Festival?
Twenty, about eight thousand dollars that we've done with the...
Oh, yes. So you've, you've reimbursed about eighty-one hundred dollars plus the Harvest Festival. The last two years I've talked to you about, we have, as we're, you know, you all started special events. It was kind of, we've got this great park, let's get it going. And, and we reached out to groups like a Wine Fest or Taste of Windsor or some others and said, you know, come use our park, rent it, not rent it, but run your event. And it would help grow our special events functions and we were giving them their, their feedback. I've been saying for a couple of years, and I'll say it to you again tonight, I would argue that we don't need, we're big enough now. We have plenty of people coming to our events. We don't need, unless you really feel that an event is tugging at your heartstrings, to give back reimbursements for every event that's out there. And the two that I've talked about last year, I'll talk about them again this year, Taste of Windsor and Wine Fest make a lot of money. So to give them a fifteen hundred dollar reimbursement, while it's a nice gesture on your part, I would argue that we're grow, we've grown and we're big enough that there's no need to do that. And I think I understand the way the budget's set up this year. You potentially have some decisions there on who gets some of your town funds in terms of reimbursements and other things that you may want to, to consider. So, my recommendation to you is please take a hard look at who you're reimbursing money to and who you, who you really choose not to. And I say that with one caveat. Harvest Festival's been here for ninety-six, ninety-seven years. I think that one is a long, long, long-term partnership. So I wouldn't say back out of that one, but there's some, several others that I would argue that maybe you should take a hard look at. So, you had a question?
I'm, I'm on the side here of cost to contractor. Not necessarily that it's in that side of the aisle, but the, I remember that when we were taking those special events and the reimburse fees and stuff, this was under Katie Van Meter, that she would build in a number for graphic arts, communications.
We chose, that conversation, you're correct, but we chose not to do that. That was getting very complicated. So all we did was, was to count the, the cost of the park rental or whatever the impact fee. And that was it. We did not add into, you know, like if we put Wine Fest on our website, we didn't charge them a hundred dollars worth of value or anything.
So this goes into a bigger conversation, which is, are we then, maybe your answer is no, but are we doing anything to help communicate some of the events that, you know, through our communication department?
Yes, we do. So we, so we, if they have, if it's a partnered event or we're spout, or obviously we sponsored it, we are publishing on our social media and on our website, X event, whatever it happens to be. We, we just chose not to value it because it was, there's not a scientific...
Well, I understand. She was doing so many labor hours and all of that stuff that she was doing.
Have a question. Have you booked that eighties band for next year, Tara?
The eighties band, I believe, is booked as well as the best band, which is my choice, the Stolen Winnebago's on July twenty-fifth. Which we were deprived of this summer. I know. So, they're returning for another world tour. Yes.
No, you've done a great job with the...
If you'd like to see the one time a year that I dance, that's the thing. Do the Humpty dance, do the Humpty dance, just for everybody at home. He does dance.
Oh, while we're on events, I'm happy to hear that we're having more polka bands. I've had more complaints about Oktoberfest this year. Which by the way, can we please do a press release or something to let folks know that we, when we're bringing it back next year, we're going to have more polka bands?
We've got three polka bands, Polka Nuts, Polka Foca and...
Yeah. But I think you got, I think from your department, and you can get with Kim on that, I think a press release needs to go out to let people know that you intend to, because I had a lot of folks who asked me to make those inquiries. And that way, if you guys send the press release, that will let them know they all were heard.
And, and just so, so we, we will do that as well as, so you know, and folks watching from home. When Luke left, obviously, a lot of people jumped in, picked up what we needed to get done. And that was an event that, you know, if we let the ball slip, we let it slip there. With that being said, we did sell, I think the library sold six thousand, or two thousand beers. So, that was pretty good. We did have one polka band, but we have already planned, Tara's already booked three for next year. So, we, we heard the feedback as well and so we've solved that for next year.
There's only six in Colorado.
I, I was, I was actually surprised we had that many, not that that many were booked for Oktoberfest, but there's that many other Oktoberfest events that early in September. That's like, you know, where I was surprised. I thought we were hedging our polka beds by having it in September. We'll have it next year in August, Mayor. We'll have all six bands. Nobody's working.
I don't care. As long as somebody lets his people know that, yeah.
We will do that.
You don't want to get Jones mad, that's all. Obviously not, I'm telling you. Should see my family reunion.
When I went to Oktoberfest in Germany, it was in September.
Yeah.
So then the next slide basically is just a summary of changes from eighteen to nineteen, so you can see them. Obviously, the event sponsorship coordinator that we just talked about, moving the rec mobile van from the general fund recreation over into the community events just based upon our philosophy of where it really fits. We moved some small programs like the Sweaty Sweater Dash, the, I'm blanking. The Harvest Festival Windsor Cruisin', we moved to there as well. So more of a community type event as opposed to a program that fits in recreation. There is, as you'll notice in the budget, sponsorship line item that's new. So, we plugged in fifty-five thousand dollars. That again is to offset some of the wages, wage costs of the new position because we believe that person can easily go out and raise that money. And the bottom line basically is a thirty-one percent increase pretty much for personnel costs and moving of the rec mobile van and a couple of those small events. So that really is a summary of the changes. And then the financial review, very quickly, you can see just a breakdown of the revenue and expenditures, the difference, and you can see the difference in Y, Y2Y's year to year in terms of abbreviation. Any other questions on community events?
That was about a half hour.
That was a half hour? Really?
He said a half hour per...
All I was told was Shane's wife's birthday and to get out of here fast. Had nothing to do with the Broncos.
He doesn't need to go home and watch the game, that's for sure.
That is true. So, next budget is recreation and general fund. This one pretty much is a lot of what you see on the screen. Senior lunch, senior programs, youth and adult sports. Our senior ride is in here. We have our scholarships, our scholarship program is there. And then this year, we also took over background checks for coaches. That's all done through our department, it doesn't go through HR. And not done through our department, it is contracted out through a national firm that does coaching background checks. To give you an example, and as you might imagine, you all know we're growing, but basketball, youth basketball's up ten percent, soccer's up fifteen percent. Both of those programs are actually capped in terms of number of people we can take because of field space and/or, for example, right now on Saturdays at games, we end at one o'clock in the afternoon. If we didn't gain any field space and we wanted to gain kids, one, we need more volunteer coaches, which is getting very difficult to find, as well as we would probably have to extend play out into five, six o'clock at night or almost to dark at this time of year. So, we, we are really running into capacity issues on field space side. And then when you start to talk about the number of kids that are actually in these programs, coaching them, getting parents to coach, I mean, literally, we sometimes say, we're not going to add a team unless you coach. And some of them say, I can't coach and we have to turn those kids away. Senior lunches are up to eighteen, up eighteen percent. A great example here is, we are at seven thousand senior lunches served already this year and we have four months left. And what I mean by that is we just finished September, so our numbers aren't in. So we will, we will quite possibly get to ten thousand. So we were a little over eight thousand last year. That's Monday, Wednesday and Friday, probably forty-nine weeks out of the year, something like that. So almost ten thousand lunches served.
Do we fund that or do they pay so much?
They're paying a couple bucks.
Three dollar donation.
Yeah. And, and the great piece to that service is there, you may not realize it, but there are a lot of people that if it wasn't for that lunch, may not eat that day. So that, that's a service that, that is, we've seen, just in my short time here, it's grown from probably five thousand or six thousand meals to now almost ten in three years.
Isn't it partnership with Walt County or UNC?
It is there, yeah, and aging.
Yeah, they're prepped at UNC.
Correct. Flag football is the driver here. So tackle football, as you've seen other places, like for example in Fort Collins, their numbers have dropped to the point of some age groups, they're not even having anymore. Greeley's having a similar, but not as bad as Fort Collins issue. We, our tackle football numbers are down a little bit, but not, not as dramatically as other places. But the driving change here and why that number's thirty-one percent is flag football. And that is a, just a shift that's happening nationally, given the concussions that people are talking about at the NFL level. And we're, we're monitoring this because what we don't know in the future is what changes in tackle football. Is it going to, are we going to be impacted and see a drop? Is tackle football going to change? I saw an article the other day that says they're recommending that tackle football doesn't start until high school. So, we're kind of organically beginning to see parents make that change anyway and, and our flag football numbers go up where our tackle has dropped, but surrounding municipalities have seen tackle drop. That's something that we will pay attention to. So for example, if we see our numbers drop next year dramatically, then we won't make purchase of new football helmets as we cycle them out because maybe we won't need as many. But that's something, we're not alarmed yet, but we are paying attention to the national trend as a dramatic decline. And we've seen that in some local municipalities. You had a question?
Do we know when Colorado National Sports Parks, multi-use fields are going to be up and running for our recreation department? Is it next spring, summer, next fall?
They have, the deadline is March twenty-twenty. I think their intent is to do, to build over the winter and into the spring and maybe potentially June, July. But again, who knows what winter is, who knows where they're at. The, the deadline or the kind of pushback date for them is March twenty-twenty.
And really, well Travis, I can tell you that they are really eager to get started on those. But we need to, because as you know, that's one of the big clawbacks. So they understand that they need to provide those fields or they could lose the whole park. The, the holdup's going to be on the master planning and make sure that they know where those fields need to go. And so I think once we know that and once we're certain based on the roads and their commercial and the easements and everything in there where those fields need to be, I think we're comfortable saying, please go forth and prosper and build them. But they, they can't just get started right away because they, they need to fit a lot of things off the side and figure that out.
Well, that was going to be in next year's capital improvement budget, but we weren't going to really start utilizing them, what, till twenty-twenty anyway? Or next fall, next fall?
We may have got on them by fall if we were fortunate in terms of the construction and weather and grass, sod taking hold, maybe by fall. So, you know, worst case, assuming that they, they meet what they've said they're going to do, worst case, if we'd have been done in, in the fall of nineteen and they're done in the spring of twenty, you know, we're really talking about six months and most of that's winter. So the other sport that I wanted to highlight was just volleyball. As you can see, the theme here in terms of youth sports especially and then senior programming, it's up. The only number that is down, excuse me. Please don't do that, I can't get sick. The only number that is down in any way, and it's kind of been created by ourselves, is senior trips, i.e. going to the casino or going somewhere else. That's down about twenty-five percent. But the reason behind that is, our day camps and adventure trips all summer long, we had a very long summer, exploded to the point we, we did, I think, twelve hundred kids through day camp this year. We lack transportation. So, instead of seniors being able to ride, ride one of our buses or vans that we have to someplace for a destination, we use that for the summer camp kids to go wherever throughout the entire summer. So, summer camp grew, but then senior trips declined year to date as we sit today. Knowing that all the kids are back in school, we fully expect to see that uptick the rest of this year as seniors now have the availability of transportation. So it's, it's a give and take. Which, which market do you want to serve? We chose that in the summer, we would serve the youth. And then the shoulder parts of the year, the vans are dedicated to seniors. Just wanted to quickly, just so you understand the numbers. Basketball is six hundred and fifty kids, soccer is sixteen fifty-five. Six ninety-seven in football, two eighty-three in volleyball, nine thirty-five in baseball and softball. Our senior rides are up forty-five percent and we don't even advertise. If we advertised, I don't, and obviously that's a big money loser in terms of people pay like four bucks and we drive them to get their groceries or have their hair done or go to a doctor's appointment. If we were to advertise for that, I, I don't know how we would keep up. Because I'm, I'm quite sure the demand for seniors' access from X, place A to B is, is quite high.
Can you drive me to Hi-ops and back?
No.
That's, that's Uber over.
And then last slide before we move into the kind of this year's budget. And this goes to Miles, you'd mentioned it earlier about GIS. And I could get out of this and pop in and just spend an hour showing you GIS's impact on our department.
Please don't.
I just took this screen. So all those different colored dots represent every player. This is just a screenshot, so I can't zoom in. But that represents every player in every youth sport that we have in this year. So I could zoom in and show you what houses their kids are participating at, where. But the interesting piece of this is, look at I-25 and everything to the west. How many people come from there? We're almost starting to take over Greeley when you talk about going to the east. So there are a lot of people using our programs, but a ton are also coming from Windsor. So you see those purple dots that are really heavy. If I was to zoom in, you'd just see a gazillion of little dots that come from Windsor itself. But I wanted to share you, share with you this because our programs are so popular and what we're running and how great a job staff does. There, we were literally drawing people from the entire region to our programs for a variety of reasons. Wanted to share that with you.
What are, what is the burgundy dot sport?
I do, I do not remember which sport that is, to be quite honest.
Somebody coming from Lower East State Park too.
So I can, I can, if you'd like screenshots of every individual park, I'd be more than happy to provide that. So summary of changes. The big one here is moving recreation camps out of the general fund and moving to the rec center. And the reason why is twofold. Primarily is they, they functioned out of the rec center. They were dropped off there, they spent many, many days and hours there. So they really spent most of their, it was run, it was a function of the rec center expansion fund. The other piece is, we really are doing our best. And you'll see that in aquatics and you begin to see that hopefully across the board with the exception of parks. Parks is very difficult when we talk about that budget. Our goal was to lessen the impact over time on the general fund in terms of recreation. I don't think we'll ever get potentially there a hundred percent perfect. But the more we can shift to areas, it's just like the personnel discussion, where, where things occur. The more we can shift to where they're actually being programmed at, then that's where the cost should go and that's where the revenue should go. So that is, to answer your question earlier on why the, what was the big shift in the funding on the recreation budget? That is the big chunk. And then we need to move, and this isn't in your budget, it's, it's plugged in as if... And then, we need to move, and this isn't in your budget, it's, it's plugged in as if it was happening, but we've been informed by the sports park group, that they are gonna take over concessions on October tenth of this year. So, we've done an analysis, and we need to take out about twenty-four thousand in revenue and expenses out of that line. So, we will make that adjustment before you get your final budget. And the reason I said expenses of twenty-four thousand on each side of the ledger is, when we raised employee rates for seasonals, for concession workers, a couple of years ago, so, for example, kids went from eight or nine dollars an hour to twelve and fourteen, it basically killed the profit margin in concessions for us. We can't sell a Coke for five bucks at Diamond Valley, or, or Eastman Park, or somewhere. So, we're, we're pretty much, it's a break-even operation at this point, when in, in reality, concessions should be a moneymaker. So, it's actually a blessing for us that they said, "Hey, a couple more weeks, and we'll take over concessions at Diamond Valley." Good for them, let them have it.
My question. When you talk about moving items like the camp into the recreation expansion fund, how do you not, maybe, Mr. Memorial, how do you not mingle that with the, the sales tax increase money that's dedicated to paying back the bond? Is that, keeps, kept separate, or?
Well, part of, if you recall, part of the sales, the sales tax was dedicated to ongoing operations. That point two percent of that point seven-five. The point, I have a separate, as I mentioned a while ago. There's a lot of information in here, but most everything in here has a, has a subsidiary worksheet to get here. But I, I do keep track in that recreation expansion fund of the part dedicated to the debt retirement, and the part that we can use for the ongoing operation and maintenance.
That would be something every year, that when we get audited, that, that some auditors would check. They would go and check and say, "Okay," and sort of make sure that we're doing a right in accounting per the vote. So, that would be an absolute auditing check.
Yeah. So, my thought is, even on the maintenance and ongoing operations, my thought and intention was that that money would be used for capital kind of expenses, and not necessarily running the day camp. And maybe the day camp makes money, and this is a moot point. But that extra tax, I thought, was for capital improvement, when the air conditioner goes out, these big expenses. The water filter needs to be replaced.
So, not a moot point, just so you understand, we do make money on day camps. So, we, we make a pretty good chunk there, so I tell you, it's a good program. But, to, to your direct question on, in terms of the O and M, that, that is operations. So, that could be salaries, that could be a program, that could be, and then the other piece of that is maintenance. That balance there is for, I think, for, for Shane, myself, Dean, staff that's here, to make sure that we leave a healthy fund balance left there for things like the, the heating and air conditioning system goes down, or slide breaks, or something big. So, we, we, we want to make sure that we leave a healthy fund there, but know that some of that money is, and can be used for daily operations. But there's, there's that fine balance, we need to make sure that, you know, ten years from now, we're, we're probably gonna have to replace something that's a hundred thousand dollar purchase. We want to make sure we're not tapping that, that fund balance down so low that we can't afford it, or we have to borrow from some other fund.
Yeah, 'cause that, that was, I won't speak for the mayor, but my intention was that that money would be saved, over time, for big capital expenses. I think the economy's doing well, and we're, we're making money on the camps, or whatever else, but I'm worried about ten years from now.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree with you. I think that's something, and you'll see a slide when we get into the rec center, that gives you an analysis of what we look at every, every month with staff, in terms of where our funds are coming from. If we get into those difficult times, that's when we will be coming back and talking to the board about, should we be raising rates for members? Because we want to make sure that our balance, our fund balance stays there, so that ten years from now, we need to replace a hundred thousand dollar item, that's great. But then, on the operations side, maybe we need to raise rates by X, whatever that, whatever that might be. So, there's a, we're in that window of time where, knock on wood, we have a, a new building where things aren't wearing out, but we will have to make sure we maintain a healthy balance as we get into year ten, year twenty, year thirty.
Right, so we're saying the same thing. My intention is to never burden a future board with those kinds of decisions.
Right, and, and again, we're, we're gonna, we're projecting a nine-point-one million dollar balance in the rec center following this year. So, the reserve is very good in that building. But, Eric's right, we're gonna need it, we know we're gonna need it. HVAC systems are hundreds of thousands of dollars, pool systems are, are hundreds of thousands. So, the, everything comes to that building at a high cost when we need it. Yep.
Any other questions on that one? Let me go back a second. You noticed there's a line, your strategic plan, I will talk about that in two slides. So, just a quick financial review. Revenues on the left, expenditures on the right. There's a decrease, for example, the big, the big chunk there is, day camps moving, same thing on the right. It's really decreased, changes in our shifting of our programs, and then personnel costs.
So, the difference here, that about one million difference between revenue and expenditures is, comes out of general fund, basically?
Yes, this, this entire budget is general fund-based.
Okay. No way we could narrow that a little? I mean, we pretty much maxed out fees, we can charge the public for these different programs, we're gonna get resistance if...
We, we could raise fees if we wanted to, we raised them a little bit last year. We, we've chosen not to at this point, but if that was something the board wanted us to study some more, we, we could. I would think that if we were getting, if, so, for example, if the fields weren't done in Diamond Valley by March of twenty twenty, we may need to say, "Hey, we're starting to turn away kids, let's raise the rates even higher for non-residents, to allow the resident players to come in and play, and begin somewhat organically turning people away via the, the cost." But the other piece of that is, in youth sports especially, our cost recovery philosophy is eighty-five percent. We have a cost recovery pyramid that, I think I showed last year's budget, and we'd be glad to bring it back if you'd like to see it. But youth sports is something that we want to, the user to pay the majority of the cost, i.e. eighty-five percent, but fifteen percent of it, we're saying that we, we as a town will absorb, because we want to keep our kids healthy and engaged and active, and, and so on, and so on. So, it's really based on the philosophy. So, for example, if you wanted to play adult basketball, our cost recovery there gets above a hundred, because you as an adult should pay more than little Johnny or Sally playing soccer, baseball, or whatever.
How about the room rentals at the rec center? Are the, is that?
They're very competitive.
Make anything on those?
Yeah, we, we do make money, they're very competitive. We've pushed staff this next year, when we get in the rec center, to try to rent more. We got, for several years, we got out of the business of weddings, kinseneras, those kind of things. We're, we're pushing to do more of that now, and that's where we make money, is an after-hour wedding. And someone rents a whole gym in the Evergreen Room, we make a lot of money. So, trying to do more of those. So, capital. I wanted to spend some time and talk to you about strategic plan. It's about a hundred and ten thousand dollars total. It's spread across a variety of departments, but I will tell you that it is extremely needed. We talked about this briefly during our strategic plan retreat. We have a master plan for the department. What we lack is a strategic plan. We, we lack the direction. The master plan was written and very open-ended, just basically for staff interpretation. We need an outside group to come in and provide us the strategic direction for the next ten years, in a variety of areas. So, I got a, a quote, it's spread throughout a variety of departments, but this, the budget's within the department. But this is the first time you see it, so I wanted to explain it in detail here. So, a group would come in, they'd meet with yourselves, they'd meet with staff, they'd meet with folks. They'd do public surveys, they'd do three public meetings, look at where we've come from and where we are now. And a great example, and I talked about this piece of the strategic plan. In two thousand and eleven, that was the last time we did a needs assessment. We have doubled in population. So, I can stand here, and staff can stand here and tell you what we think people want, in terms of parks and recreation, and trails and open space? But do we really know? No, we've not asked the public for a long time. So, this is a big piece of that. Also, looking at our facilities, and, and where we're at in parks, and how old our buildings are, and understanding what our depreciation should be, and, and identifying what pieces of our, our entire park system should be replaced, and what year should we be budgeting for? Not just based on staff's analysis, having professionals come in and tell us that. Ranking and prioritizing demands. So, for example, if we hear from the public that trails and open space are the number-one things, and playgrounds are not, then that's where we should be bud, budgeting for our monies, and our efforts, and our programs going forward. Again, we've not asked the public that since two thousand and eleven. Providing and working on our capital improvement plan, I think it will be enhanced by having that. And then, operation and funding, this is something else we talked about a lot at the strategic plan retreat. Understanding what our organization looks like when we get out to sixty thousand people, understanding what our programs and what, where we should develop them at, and what the fee should be. So, to your point, Dr. Jones, in terms of, what should youth sports be, and what should we charge? And how much is too much to raise in one year, versus, you know, if we want to take baseball from fifty dollars to a hundred, do you do it in one fell swoop, do you budget it in incremental increases? And then, funding and revenue strategies, especially, and this is the big one, and I think we talked about a lot, it's in your strategic plan, it's in your goals over the next couple of years. Two, it's really twofold. Trails and open space, how do you pay for it? If we want to build a five million dollar trail, or we want to go spend ten million dollars on acquisition of multiple open spaces for community buffers, how do you fund that? Is this, so, we need a strategic plan, we need a group to come in and say, "Is it grants? Is it an open space and trails taxes, is it something else? How do we fund that? What community partners are out there?" So, this strategic plan really does set the course for us for the next ten years. The other one would be, we just merged our, our neighborhood park and community park fees into one. I would stand here and tell you that, that fee is too low, it should be higher. But again, I, I'd like you to hear that analysis be done, and then hear that from an outside party, because obviously, you, you all may hear, the developers may hear from me, and go, "Well, he's wrong." I think we need to have a, a consultant come in and look at what other places are charging, so that we know that when we had, when we need thirty million dollars to build out the rest of our park system, and we need another thirty million dollars for our trails and open space, where's that money gonna come from? So, we have the master plan that says, "This is what we want to do," but we don't have the direction that says, "You need to take X, Y, Z steps in order to get it done." So, that's really just what the, the purpose of the strategic plan is, and it's spread out amongst every budget that, that is within Parks and Recreation. Any questions on that one? So, aquatics, this is also a general fund. So, this is talking about Chimney Park Pool in the lake. We had a really long summer this year, actually, the pool's still open for the, for the middle school swim team. So, kudos to Kendra's old team for keeping, keeping the pool open. I think they, they finished later this month. Oh, great. But I wanted to share with you a couple statistics in the growth that's happening, especially in non-motorized use of the lake. Permits are up thirty-two percent, and then actual daily, like, people coming in and say, "I want to rent the paddleboard," hundred and forty-six percent. So, you can see that water sports are growing. Group lessons are up a hundred and six percent. We've taught, to date, sixteen hundred kids how to swim. I think, as you heard, before I get into that, so, we had eleven thousand three hundred and eighty-nine users at Chimney Park Pool this summer. Six thousand one hundred and seventy-three boat rentals, up eight percent, just renting boats. So, next year's budget is affected by a couple of things. Shorter summer at the pool, we're now have a four-month summer, we only have a two-month summer. The Whippet, which is a capital piece I'll talk about in a second. And then, you all that were on the board last year, heard me talk pretty passionately about swimming, and how it's a life sport, and it really is about saving lives. We don't want to ever have a drowning in our community if we can help it. And we, we, we mentioned, and I challenged Kendra last year, within the next two years, to come up with a sweep, a free swim program where we taught some grade free swim lessons. She and her staff are proposing that for next year. We would teach, beginning in the fall, every third grader in the Windsor School District how to swim, for free. We're applying for a grant, but we've budgeted to get this done, even if we don't get the grant. So, the, the cost to do that is five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars, that's for the, kind of, starting in the fall. That, if we get a grant, that's five thousand dollars, so it will only cost us about six hundred dollars. But even if we don't get it, as I talked about last year, and I reemphasize that tonight, we believe it is extremely important that kids learn how to swim. This isn't gonna make them expert swimmers, it's not gonna make them be on the swim team when they get to middle school and high school. This is about saving lives, period. So, so you see that in the budget as well. Yes, sir.
Great idea.
Thank you.
I think you should open up to the entire town, not just Windsor School District.
Second. We, we can definitely do that, we felt like that was coming, that question, in terms of the different school districts. We, what we haven't figured out is what, how many, what the cost is there, but we, it's, it's mental. I understand.
Well, I think one thing is transportation, so.
Right, transportation.
If we can get contacts for Pooter, we would gladly reach out.
Should be opened up to all third-grade residents.
You're gonna do this during the school.
School year.
Yeah, so they, the school district.
But on a, on a week day, or a weekend?
So, it would.
During the school day, so they will, this will be a, a course, that they will take an hour out of their day for the eight weeks.
I don't think transportation's a big deal for Laren McKen, Windsor residents and Laren McKenney.
But if it's during the school, they can't just take.
Yeah, is that the only thing they're doing during the school day?
Yeah, we, we were gonna use a, a class period during the school to bus kids to, to the...
Yeah, 'cause you'd be looking at Bethke and Timneth would be the... Eventually, we'd have an elementary school in, by your neighborhood, but.
In Loveland, it's Pooter Schools.
We can, we'll work on the details.
But ultimately, I think you talked about saving lives, but it will get some kids on a swim team who, find out they're good swimmers, who wouldn't have otherwise. And this is something similar to what the ski industry does, I think, for fifth graders. They get into the preseason passes, and gets kids interested in skiing. And I think that's a very successful program.
I know this blows your numbers, but I think it's like he was saying, for not just Pooter, but for all Windsor, if they're a Windsor resident, and they're a third grader, I think it's a wise.
Sure.
There's five hundred kids that go to RCS on the south side across Rhodes Boulevard, that are all Windsor residents across the whole school. So, we have a large presence that are not just in Pooter and Weld RE4 that, you know.
We have some town subalics too.
Right, right.
And we've worked with some great groups in the past, like Great Western. You know, maybe that's something we turn into a grant program like that, where every third grader, you know, that is in Windsor School District could apply for, you know, a quick application, and they can get a fee waived for one swimming lesson during the summertime, or on Monday, Wednesday evenings.
I love it, I love it.
You know, so I think there's definitely some alternatives that we can dive into, and look into some, setting up some grant type. If we have good proposals, most of the time, those groups are very willing to feed into those.
I think it's a great program, great idea.
Great idea. I have a question on the Whippet.
Sure.
How long will it be open? Are you just looking at the shorter summer period, or will be?
It's eleven weeks for the first year, we want to see how it goes, but that basically is the shorter summer for this year, Memorial Day to Labor Day. If we see that it's extremely popular, obviously, the opening probably can't, won't be effective, but if we need to keep it open a little later, we, we could. But we start to get, you know, earlier nights, weather begins to change. So, at, at least initially, we're looking at that window.
And then, we plan, all strategic plan team buildings will be on the Whippet from now on, so we're...
Full body system.
From archery to the twenty-two course, everything happens on.
Yeah, let's take archery out to the Whippet.
So, under the financial, just, you know, brief overview of financial, as you can see, the change is really a result of the Whippet. And if we didn't have the Whippet, you would see dramatic decrease in revenue, as well as expenses. The other change, really, on the expense side, is the shorter summer, less chemicals for the pool wages, and then, we won't, we won't need to keep the pool open for swim team.
So, why is the, why is it a shorter summer? Is it just, again, Weld RE?
This year was a four-month summer.
For Weld RE4?
For Weld RE4, so we kept, we opened earlier, we stayed open later. The pool's open right now, in terms of keeping open for the school district team to swim. So, we would have shut down right there at the end of the Harvest Festival. So, we got another month or so of chemicals, utility costs, et cetera.
They're still building the high school.
Yeah, yes, correct. So, then on capital? Yes, sir.
In, in the last couple buckets of your large parks and rec machine, there have been, it's clear that the expenditures exceed the revenue. And so, it's subsidized to some extent, grant programs, et cetera. Is the subsidized fund come out of just general fund taxes, or is it part of the fee that's paid?
So the subsidize is coming out of the tax. It's, I'm assuming that you're transferring or you're paying the definite, those two funds out of sales tax difference, correct?
Well, out of general fund.
Out of general fund?
Yes.
So for example, rec, community, community events, recreation and aquatics are general fund functions. So if there's a deficit in any of them, that comes out of the general fund balance.
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of it depends on where we record the revenue. You know, if it's a program that we run out of the rec center and we're a little short on the fees, then yes, we would use some of the tax money from that fund to subsidize it.
So on the capital side of the Whippet, just a quick overview and reminder. It's a water playground seen on the right, only one in Colorado. Based on what we think is to be a low four hundred people users per week over the eleven weeks, the revenue over expenditures would allow us to pay it back in five years. We feel like it'll be extremely popular and it can happen quicker, but we took the conservative end. Again, weather matters, so if we have a really rainy summer or it happens to be cold, you know, we can see some fluctuations there.
How do you secure this for a?
So that's something, that's a great, a great question, something we're trying to figure out whether we should, I think Tara and Kendra talked to some people at NRPA and some people have chosen to pay a staff member to stay though till eleven, twelve o'clock at night. Some people rely on their police force, some people don't do anything, they put up a sign.
No, he asked about anchoring.
No, no, I meant secure like.
Secure, I see.
I thought you meant security, like you decide at one o'clock in the morning you would want to swim.
Yeah.
I would, at some point, it's the same thing, you could go out and swim at the lake at one o'clock in the morning. That does obviously give an attraction out there in the water. So it's gonna be something that we're gonna have to pay attention to. We're not budgeting for security after hours. At this point, it is something we will have to pay attention to.
It's like a lot more fun than just swimming in the lake.
Yeah, but.
And it's costing us money.
Correct. So.
I think the attitude that police patrol is a short answer, I think, you know, the police already kind of patrol the park anyway, just make sure that there's no un, or occurrences there.
If Rick wants to, we can put a substation, right?
Well, that's important, two hundred and fifty pound senior citizen.
Yes.
It will?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we need a senior day, you know, set aside an hour.
Any other questions on the Whippet?
Double the cost on the senior day.
Double the cost? They have a lot of discretion. Arts and Heritage, so I wanted to highlight, this is a continually, continually growing program. This team with Luke's guidance and Laura and Caitlin and some others is just continuing to grow in terms of the programs, the impact that they're doing. For example, on the left, a hundred and sixteen percent growth in programs related to education and just general programs like an arts and crafts or a makers thing, that kind of stuff. And then on the far right, I thought I'd take a minute, pass through. One of these meetings potentially next Monday, we will bring staff into Rec because have Tara introduce Laura, but that's an award that staff just got from CPRA in terms of a senior program where they literally go out to senior housing and bring cultural programming to them. And so we won an award, they won an award this year for their efforts in terms of senior programs. For example, there, I remember in the write-up, there was a lady who has like severe shakes and those kind of things. But when she's painting, because we brought painting to her, she's able to focus and paint and that goes away during that, you know, half an hour session that she's painting. So this is, this is all credit to that staff in terms of the programs and things that they're creating, so. I'll give you some numbers, programs in education has already reached this year eighteen hundred and seven people, up a hundred and sixteen percent. Exhibits are down a little bit in terms of thirty-seven percent drop at this point. But exhibits really, we get a big influx typically in the opening and then they tend to go away and people don't, we don't really have, we live in a bedroom community, so it's really about the weekend traffic. It's not, people, we're not a destination museum, I don't know that we ever will be. But when we have large exhibits, we have a big influx of people and then they trickle in throughout the weeks while the exhibit's open. Boardwalk Park Museum visits are up by twenty-five percent, so almost a thousand people have gone through the museum buildings this year. I think that's in significant change mostly by staff's outreach, so we've, a couple of years ago, we weren't going to the schools and trying to get the fourth grade class to come or reaching out to different groups and different pieces of Northern Colorado and say, hey, come walk through our buildings. And the other was, I remember and she, her voice still rings in my head, the mayor's mother saying, turn those buildings back into what they used to be and put the artifacts back into the building and not really be an interpretive space, but let people touch the cups and the bottles and the spoons and the dresses and the hats that they used to use when they were kids. And I think that's also helping drive people to our museums because they're literally getting to touch our artifacts and not just, you know, look at them in the window and they can't touch them or hold them or see them or they're in our storage facility and they never, never, never come out. So that's where we were about three years ago and this group has really created a dramatic shift. So a couple of things that are a little different, so in the budget that you have reflects two part-time year-round people to help keep us open during the week and on the weekends especially. We threw some discussions with Shane and Dean and Vicky, cut that back to one. If we, if we eliminate those positions, we would have to not be open on the weekends. In the past, we were relying on our full-time people to not only do their job, but to keep open the buildings during the week and on the weekend, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do that. And this budget also does not include creamery programs. The capital piece that you'll see in a few minutes includes, after we acquired the building in December, the actual construction of it, but we don't know when that will happen in terms of whether that's mid-year, later in the year. So we didn't budget for the actual operations, but we'll have it up and, up and being ready to run with the goal of actually opening it up to Makerspace, which is what we talked about in the past in two thousand and twenty. Now, with that being said, if we get into, I don't know, this time next year and it's done and we choose to say, hey, can we run a few programs out of there? We may go ahead and do that and figure out how to do that, knowing that in two thousand and twenty, if we want to have the creamery as a vibrant Makerspace, we're probably talking about staffing and that goes back to one of Shane's earlier slides in a position that wasn't funded for this next year. I would hope that it comes back to you as a consideration for funding in two thousand and twenty. Yes, sir.
If the library fund is funded, I believe the library was planning to have a significant Makerspace as part of their new facility. If they get funded, they pass on the ballot, I assume we're still open to consider reconsidering the use of that?
I think we're open to considering the use of it, I will tell you that philosophically, our mission and their vision, their mission and our vision, mission are different in terms of what they're trying to do. And when, I think that's a larger decision that we need to have with the board in terms of what is a cultural center? And for example, I, I view the cultural center as all of downtown, that includes the library, includes the creamery, includes businesses and the DDA backlots and Boardwalk Park and all of that. The library has talked about a cultural center being the library. So I think it's a large, to your, to your question, I think it's a larger conversation that we all need to have, but are we open to the creamery being some different use if the library puts in the Makerspace? Absolutely, I think that's a conversation that we, but we definitely need to have that and we also need to understand what is your vision for cultural? The downtown kind of, in your strategic plan, you talk about cultural center, is that a building or is that a place? And everything that makes up that place? So that's something we probably need to talk about, because I think that goes to your, to your question on who does what? Whether it's a library or some other building or company that might come in.
Eric, how many employees are in the, is it just the two?
It's.
Two or three.
Two, yeah, thank you, two and three.
One part-time and two full-time.
Okay.
And now we have a supervisor, which is replacing Luke, so eventually we'll have three full-time. Once we fill that position.
So they're keeping these museums open plus trying to do their normal.
Plus doing the programming, I will tell you, they're, they're max with the programming and what we've found is the programming is the answer. But at the same time, we've invested a lot in our inherited museum, we've invested a lot in the Boardwalk Park museums. To just say, we're not gonna keep them open is counterintuitive to what we've been doing over the last three years and even many years before that in terms of the investment of time and effort and money that have gone into those facilities to, to just limit them to, I don't know, ten hours a week or twenty hours a week? Kind of seems a little counterintuitive to the direction that we're going, but on the programming side, staff is making leaps and bounds in terms of, there are lots of people that don't care a hoot about playing baseball or soccer or something. Or they, or they like to do that, but they also like to go to a make and take class. I know Tara got many people in her school with her kids and now all of a sudden we have fifteen, twenty kids show up for make and take after school, where before we didn't have that.
What's, what's the status of the Old Depot right now?
Yeah, so it's, it's open seasonally in terms of, so we have a, you know, people can walk through just like the museum buildings. We have different displays on there, so it's, it's open, it's in great shape. Is that what you were getting at in terms of status?
You just don't hear a whole lot about it.
Yeah.
If you ever want a tour, they'd love to show up.
They'd love to show that to you.
If you ever want a tour, we'd love to, Caitlin and Laura would love to.
Well, as in about ten years ago.
We should show you.
It's different.
Yeah, it is much more like a museum history of Windsor.
Correct.
Before it was this conglomeration of stuff everywhere. I've done a really nice job of, I think, telling more of the history and different.
But I think your point though is well-taken and we hear it from staff. Marketing what we have and there's that fine balance. So when you look at our, the size of our department and we have youth sports and adult sports and programs and classes and rec center and culture, how do you market fairly inequitably across the whole spectrum of what we do? And I think what I hear you saying is what I also hear staff say a lot, which is we're not getting the word out enough about culture, even though we're seeing great increases year to year. It's nothing like, for example, what sports sees. Financial review is pretty, pretty self-explanatory again there. Revenue's up, again, they're contingent upon staffing. If we don't have the staff to run programs or, for example, and this year is a great example of if we, if we don't get enough participants, we don't run the program, but the cost also doesn't occur. And then really the, the change and increase on cost is personnel and exhibit costs and then supplies that staff needs to run the programs and that again is really taking off. Capital? Yes, sir. Did you have a question? Capital, the creamery we've talked about, museum storage is also in the budget, we kind of talked about that earlier. And then Eaton House Master Plan, again, this was either Makerspace or some kind of business incubator. I lean significantly towards business incubator. You know, if this was a micro brewery and we're selling two thousand beers on a one-day event at Oktoberfest, can you imagine what a micro brewery might do in that place? And then a year later, they go rent a space downtown and we have a new micro brewery there. So there's, and then it could be a cupcake shop. The Eaton House Master Plan will focus on the design of that and tell us what we need to do and what it's gonna cost and then we'll come back to you in future budgets to actually do some construction if the board's in agreement with whatever that master plan may say in terms of direction.
Yeah, I think Eric, you and I have talked before, but when I think about that, is there something you can do in connection with Ames? For Ames having a class on culinary arts, pastry shop, whatever? And tie it in and say, hey, you could have your students run this thing.
Right.
Because adding, having to your point, then a permanent establishment would be great.
And I think you've heard Shane say earlier, many months ago, you know, maybe that if they pay X fee and then they, they develop a viable business somewhere in Windsor, we give them the feedback. That's kind of a, you know, give them that reimbursement because they developed a viable business and they stayed in Windsor. So, you know, there's, there's some win-win there because long-term, if they, we keep them in Windsor, we're winning on the, on the revenue side.
And I understand what we're doing with this museum storage, but I'm just gonna, I just have to say this though. I just wish we could in some way, shape or form, keep the museum storage closer to the museums that they operate from, that they have to operate with them, because it just kind of seems counterproductive to take all of our stuff and move, you know, and move it way out, way out there and then every time we need something and it just feels like, I wish it could be closer at hand.
I totally agree.
But I understand all the constructions, I know we've looked at.
Totally agree and I won't, I won't belabor the point.
In a perfect world, I wish that that could happen because it just does not, it just doesn't go together.
Right, and maybe, maybe down the road a long ways, if we ever have a new museum building that has storage in downtown and we've acquired land, maybe some of that can come back that what we're intending on building out the Parks and Public Works facility can then be used for something else that, that helps those two departments.
I guess I'll add kind of my thoughts to that too. I'd hate to see us have, build this now and then not too far down the road. You know, the whole area with the Old Depot building and that, that whole area is really cool if you go and walk through there, but not many people do and I, I just make myself do it. If, if there were a new museum that had its own storage in that area, just draw people into that. I guess I'd hate to build this storage now and then not too far down the road be saying, hey, we're gonna build a museum with storage now, what? Is there, I'm guessing there are climate-controlled good storage facilities that will lease out space?
There are, but there would be significant distances, we'd be talking about going to another town. Nothing, nothing local of that size that would suffice for what we're talking about. And I also think, you know, obviously don't know what the future looks like, but I think that we're talking about long-term in terms of the acquisition of the cost to acquire land that's close. I mean, there are properties that if I had a magic wand or the money tree that was on the screen in second slide, I could tell you right where we'd go, but.
Solid gold, man.
Yep, I'm rubbing it, but. So I, I think I understand both of your points, staff feels the same way, but at the same time, we're at capacity now that we took on the newspapers. We are literally at capacity, we're, you're gonna see in a, in a meeting coming up, we're actually gonna de-assess something that's not very good out of our collections so that we can bring something else on.
Right, and I just add, I mean, to the mayor's point, I mean, to me, that'd be the best case scenario. We're just building a nice, beautiful museum and we have storage as a part of that and it's downtown. But I think another benefit of going out to the Public Works facility is there's, for example, some, some cold storage out there, there's just some space that we actually think we could take retrofit for this for a lot less money that's in the budget and we can take some space that's not really that utilized in Public Works right now and make it a great space for ourselves for a lot less money and then hopefully reduplicate with what Public Works actually needs with the space. So I, I do agree that spending one point seven five million dollars on just a locker to hold our stuff seems like a lot of money without any real gain to the taxpayers, so we are really trying to plan and make sure that, but, but he's right, we are out of space, I mean, other than walking aisles between our collections, that space is, I was up there a week or two ago and it was, he's not kidding with, the newspapers up there, we're at capacity.
Any other questions on art and heritage? So rec center and as, while you all know, we have two funds, I'm gonna just highlight and talk about them as if there were one building and not, not two different funds. So we are at sixty-six hundred and eighteen members. That's a nineteen percent increase year over year. Eighty-one percent of them are Windsor residents. Of those members, three hundred and ninety-six visit every day or, or visit daily. Our daily visits for the actual building are right at a thousand. We are on target to crack a little over three hundred and eighty-five thousand building visits. That's people walking through the front door. And I didn't know this until I was walking out on, when was it, teen night, Friday? I was walking out to work on Friday evening and recognized that, and then so I had staff email me, five hundred and seventy-five kids came to teen night on Friday. They didn't come through the front door, they came through the side door because we're trying to keep the teens away from the members. They don't count in that number. So three hundred and eighty-five thousand people, that number is literally bodies counted going. going in and out. There are people that come in from the side that don't get into that total, so you can imagine the impact, just that building, to have that many people walking through the front doors is truly amazing. So our active number at the end of, of, in terms of members, was five hu- five thousand five hundred and forty last year, and eleven hundred and ninety-one silver sneakers. So, when you compare that number, that's where you get the ninety percent increase. Again, building is very popular, we're not talking about any rate increases at this point, don't foresee them in the near future, but that is something that we pay attention to. This is a slide that we look at, staff, so Sandra, Tara, myself, and Kendra look at this on a monthly basis. This is through August, so this green baseline right here was our revenue that we said we were gonna make. So this is people who pay to enter the building, day pass, drop-in, or membership, whether that be three-month, annual, whatever, but they pay to come in the building. The green line was our two thousand and seventeen goal, and you can see the blue, we blew that out of the water. So we really just, and, and quite honestly, we opened in sixteen, seventeen was a somewhat educated guess, and we were wrong on the positive side. So we bumped it, educated guess on eighteen, so that's this blue line. And so you can see, eighteen is tracking slightly higher than seventeen in terms of every month, in the revenue that we have coming through the door, and we start to see where the dips are at and when our low attendance is. And a great example would be, if we see or start to think that we're worried about not making our revenue number at the end of the year, we'll run a special and get a, a quick injection of cash, because we might run a three-month special, but you get four months for paying for three, and then all of a sudden, we can make that line go up. So, I, I share, share with you this, so you, you see that we are paying attention every month to bodies through the door, what's our revenue, making changes as we need, in terms of making sure that we hit the numbers that we've said we're gonna hit. So you can see the report, this is through August up here, so we're plus forty-eight thousand. If we were to finish the year based on these lines never matched, we would be over our number by twenty-nine thousand. And what you're going to see is, September's a low number, our numbers will creep back over thirty thousand people going through the door, and our revenue will go up because the weather changes. So, I'm already starting to see it, the last couple of days have been cloudy outside, people don't go out of the parks, they don't walk on the trails, they come in and walk inside. You come in, in the winter, and you'll see more seniors participating, walking the track or working out, because the weather isn't good for them to go walk on a trail, they might slip on ice or snow. So we see our numbers fluctuate in terms of bodies through the door and our revenue, and that's basically what that curve is. So, this is two years' worth of data, we threw out sixteen when we started in October, but you can see, and, and next year's line is very similar to the eighteen line, we didn't budget much higher, because we think we found what probably is our, our sweet spot in terms of revenue. But I say that knowing that we're still growing in terms of members. So that's where we took the conservative tactic, let's try another year of pretty much the same revenue line, and see where we go, and we'll have a three-year trend. Any questions?
If someone pays for the whole year?
Yes.
Do you spread it?
No, it, it's, it's crude based upon the month that the money came in. So a great example would be, and I think that's a fabulous question, if in November, this number looks like it's positive and we're gonna meet our revenue line, I'm not gonna run a special to say, hey, we'll give you fifty bucks off if you pay in cash for the year, because that money goes into eighteen budget. I'm not running that special in January and get a big influx of money into the nineteen budget to start the year off really good. But if, you know, so, so to your point, it's, it's, it's cash on the day that it comes in is when it's recorded.
Which is why January, you know, everybody hits their New Year's resolutions, joins the gym, you know, you get nice big numbers in, and then it slopes off, and then you hit your hot months, you know, August, September, everybody's outside and...
So, just wanted to share with you what, what we look at, and this is one slide. We literally look at about twelve different pages of, whether that's three-month memberships, drop-in passes, childcare, so we study all of those trend lines to understand where we're at on our revenue. Just some highlights, pickleball, going crazy. I remember when I got here, there was like sixty people in the pickleball club, they're almost to three hundred. Tara made a comment that, at the NRP convention, everybody classes and stuff, everybody in the whole nation's just complaining about pickleball players, and her answer to me was, embrace them. They got money, and they spend it. And as you all see, if you, if you come by Town Hall in the summer, that court is packed. But, so this is, this is inside the rec center, a hundred and thirty percent increase in, in pickleball. Rentals are up thirty, thirty-seven percent, thirty-two percent increase in use of our portal personal training, and fitness class attendance is up. Again, people just using the building as much as they possibly can.
Eric, was there ever any thought on this facility to try to do a racket or racquetball?
Yes, that's on my, one of my personal goals, because my boss loves it, and it, and said that I'd get a two-hundred percent raise if I built a racquetball center, so that's coming in the twenty-twenty budget.
Got any more of those gold dollars hanging around?
Yeah, he's gonna get five of those, you know, just, he can take those from the bank.
Would love to do that, don't know where yet, but I would argue that when you start to think about where we're at today, and the numbers that we have, and we're not at capacity yet, but we're at thirty thousand people, what are we at, forty and fifty and sixty? We may be talking about some other facility, whether that be racquetball and meeting rooms or something, I don't know, but when we get five, ten years down the road and we're forty thousand people, forty-five, we're probably gonna have to be talking about other types of facilities to take some of the pressure off.
Right, well, yeah, like Greeley has two rec centers, right, and a lot of larger communities do that, so it, I, I think that, again, down the road, we may say, do we need another satellite rec center somewhere in the community to address kind of community needs, take the pressure off? And if we do that, what, what's in there? You wouldn't wanna take and do a mirror image of what you had, you wanna offer some new programming as well.
Racquetball and pickleball. Yeah. Staffing within the rec center, there's an added dishwasher position. Briefly tell you, we asked for this position last year, and we're told no, that staff could wash dishes, and so we did that for two months. I washed, Tara washed, Kendra washed, everybody took a turn and recognized that, you know, pay us to wash dishes. So, to be quite honest with you, we took a position that's a fitness attendant, and didn't use them as a fitness attendant, use them to do, to do the dishwashers. So when you think about ten thousand meals for the seniors, somebody has to wash those ten thousand plates, and bowls, and utensils, and all of that. So this allows us to hire someone to do the dishwashers.
My dad says it builds character, though, so.
It does.
There is that.
It does.
Typical manipulation to eat and do the dishes, that's all it is.
Is he looking for a part-time job?
I might. Job becomes a lot of character, apparently.
It does. And you get to hear, you get to eat lunch with the seniors, which is fun. So, if you ever wanna do that, let us know. Can I bring some business cards? Sure. You have to pay us a fee to solicit.
Your logo on every plate.
I just was gonna mingle.
Yeah, you pay us ten thousand a year, we'll let you wash dishes and hang out.
Hey Paul, I, I think it pays more than town board.
It may, it may. Your logo on every plate.
Also in the budget is a full-time facility maintenance technician. I will tell you that we began this actually in seventeen in the fall, in terms of taking the custodial staff that was in the rec center, that was under Public Works Facilities supervision, and said, they're better off if they're supervised by the people who are running and in the building every day. So we did that, but there was always a facility transfer out. We made that decision late in sixteen, or in seventeen, so we didn't make a budget change. And then, so in the end of the eighteen budget, we, we've maintained the facility transfer over to facilities from the rec center, but found that it was a great decision in terms of who supervises who. So, we took a team that were supervised by the Public Works Facilities team, they're now part of the rec center team, and the Parks and Recreation Culture team, and they operated under our supervision. And so what we found was it would be better if we then just maintained and ran all of our buildings. So for example, if there's a toilet that breaks at Main Park, and we need to have a toilet replaced, staff can do it, or staff can contract it out. Same thing at the rec center, we continue to do the cleaning or the custodial at the police department. So this shift actually finishes it in terms of, the funding stays in the rec center, so we budget for all of our contracted services, all of our supplies and materials, and then we will do all of our maintenance. The other thing that eliminates, and we found this happens a lot by doing this entire, this year, was if the HVA system, HVAC system goes down, our staff is calling the public works staff, who doesn't have the expertise, to then call the contractor. So we had a middleman. Well, the public works facility staff is super busy with everything else not counting our building. They may or may not have the priority or the desire, or the, the, they're so busy on something that Shane's giving them here, that they never get in a timely manner that we want it done in the rec center. So we would either call, or we wait on them, and it's frustrating for us to wait on them to get over to our building, and then ultimately, they call a contractor. So we've cut out the middleman. In order to get this done, we needed to add a facility technician, so we have six custodians and a pool and maintenance technician, but that person does the rec center pool, and some of the maintenance in the building, as well as the outdoor pool. So we, that's the position, this position will give us that handyman person to manage our contracts and do all the maintenance in the buildings, as well as buildings that are under the Parks and Recreation Culture Department. So if something breaks at the Art and Heritage Center, that person goes fixes it. Something breaks in a park that's not under the purview of the parks team, so for example, the parks team might clean a bathroom, but they don't replace a sink or a toilet. This way, we don't have to rely on the public works facility team. The other piece of this is, and the great timing of it is, Ken Sturkel just resigned with his next, last day is the end of this, that team's down to one person. We've actually decided, October first, we're gonna operate in this manner going forward. So our team knows, don't call Public Works if you have a light bulb out, change it yourself, or if you can't do it, we'll get somebody to do it and cut the middleman out. So that really is what you see on the screen here in terms of the, the reason and the need for the facilities maintenance technician.
I'm sorry, who was it you said you hired?
Ken Sturkel, he works, he's the facilities technician in Public Works.
Yeah, we, we've got basically two facility techs, so we have two full-time people right now that are responsible for all the building maintenance, which is really insufficient to, to what town needs with all the facilities. So, basically Eric's proposal is Parks, Parks and Culture just gets their own person to do it, to take care of their needs, and then also budgeted is a supervisor for the facility team, so they'll get up to three folks from their current two. Parks, Parks and Culture will have one, the rec center will have one, so we're actually adding more staff to kind of address the needs. So, it's, yeah, beyond a skeleton crew right now.
So Ken, Ken will be backfilled as well as?
He, he will, and, and we actually, because we knew, I was speaking to Terry, and once we knew that Ken was gonna leave, we started advertising his position immediately, so we didn't even wait for that official resignation, when, when we knew he was in fact gonna be leaving, we started advertising right away, because we knew that it was gonna be dire straits.
So, next slide, and I'll try to get out of here quick, I only got a couple more.
Quick, that ship sailed about an hour.
If the Steelers were playing, it would've been five minutes. Summary of charges. Personnel costs, you can see have changed, but again, goes back to the earlier discussion in terms of allocating who goes where. Great example would be myself. My pay and benefits were all coming out of the park general fund. So, that's not where I spend all of my time, I spend a small percentage actually on that. So now, it's, it's moved and shifted, just like some others that were talked about earlier. Increased transfer to IT, strategic plan that we've already talked about, the elimination of the facility transfer, so the budget went up in terms of all the staffing now is in the rec center, all the supplies and materials, but there isn't the transfer over to the facility side, which was in the general fund. And then there's a transfer for the, from the rec center over to the expansion, that covers some of the shifting of the, the staffing as well. And then the financial review, again, this is CRC, so this is the old building, increased by, of revenue forty-four thousand or twenty percent, really due to rentals and programming. And then on the expenditure side, it's about personnel costs and contractual costs, and the contract costs are really related to facility maintenance. On the expansion, we reclassified two full-time thirty-hour custodians, already benefited to forty. What we did when we made the shift in seventeen was we recognized very quickly that, so we have four full-time forty-hour benefit employees and two that are thirty-hour benefited, but we needed the extra ten hours from each of those people, so, and we've done that many times throughout the year, saying, hey, can you work an extra ten hours? And, and we've paid them that. And, and for the most part, they've been willing to step up and do that. So this fixes it. Really what they're losing is, this is about benefits, it really isn't, isn't in terms of their pay, because they were, they were working, many of them worked many weeks of the forty-hour work week. The benefit piece was, so for example, an employee who was, and Vicki, you might help me here, because I don't remember the number, but if you're thirty hours a week, you got like five hours of vacation, five hours of sick time, by going to forty hours a week, you get six point six seven. So over the course of months, the person was given shorted on the benefit side, so this really is the fix of benefits. And then on the administrative side, we have two part-time, year-round, thirty-hour or twenty-eight-hour week employees that are not benefited, that work in the rec center on the administrative side, and there was a request from the parks, from the parks team to add a administrative assistant there. For example, Wade, Bob, Ken, all higher-level staff are doing their own billing, their own invoices, they're paying their own credit card bills, they're doing their own filing. So instead of, and, and when we talked to Shane, he's like, well, is there some other option instead of adding a, a whole new body? So what we said was, let's take one of those thirty-hour positions and move them to a full-time benefited forty, knowing that about ten or twelve, fifteen hours a week can be dedicated to the parks team to give them some administrative help. So that's what you see here, knowing that it's absorbed and in the Recreation Center expansion budget. Any questions on staffing?
Are they doing the Tonga?
Here? Nah, I don't know what that is, a father-daughter dance?
Oh, okay, I was curious, yeah.
And then, this, this picture is the cup challenge from one of the day camps. And then, if you really wanna see some exciting folks, check out some of the senior aqua aerobics classes every day at the rec center, some really, really engaged participants.
Might see Ivan, could've.
You what?
Might see Ivan.
Yes, you will. If you didn't see it, Paul and I did help Ivan go down the zip line at the Main Park opening, so.
Eighty-two years old.
Eighty-two years old, that zip line.
With a push.
Yes. So then, summary of changes is, full year op, we just, as you all know, we split out terrace position and operations facility manager will be, so there's a change there in terms of full year salary. Staffing, as previously mentioned, we moved the day camps there. Facility changes that we talked about, and then trying to increase our programming in terms of the aquatic staffing inside the, the rec center. There's your changes on the financial side of things. So dramatic changes a little bit in terms of expenditures, and it really is the shifting and reallocation properly of where staffing should be. Oops, almost. And then, just so you, in case you didn't notice, and we talked about these, there's new transfer to the rec, rec center fund, there's a transfer to the administrative services funds, kind of like HR does some work for the Parks, Parks and Culture, so there's some money there, those kind of things. Transfer to IT, and then the removal of some of these transfers. So, with that being said, that is it for the, the recreation side of the Parks, Parks and Culture budget, and be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any further questions?
Do you need a new trophy case? I didn't see that in there.
No, not yet.
Okay.
Well, you wore us down. That's the goal.
Take whatever you want.
Anything about future meetings before we leave?
No, I, I know that Kelly Hodling did, my deck again, trying to find out with the Public Service Day and that CFU game, and she's left a couple messages now, and we just can't seem to get any more information, so as it comes out, we'll certainly let the board know about that.
Okay.
And then we do have, we didn't put on the future meetings, but we do have Excel coming, right? The, the president of Excel Energy is gonna be here.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going over to the lunch tomorrow, too, and then I'll, then I'll come over here after that.
Great, okay, and I think we're gonna have that upstairs as well, upstairs. Great, okay, and I think we're going to have that upstairs as well, upstairs.
I'm sorry, Shane, is that something we're all?
At the, at two, it's two-thirty, I think, up here, you can come if you want to meet the new Excel president, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I saw that he scheduled this in very nicely for twenty minutes or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, that's really all it is, is a meet and greet.
Yeah, I've, I'm, I've asked, uh, some senior leadership staff, just people really involved with kind of growth and development, uh, to come to that. Um, but yeah, I think it's a lot more of a softer meet and greet, I don't think it's going to be a super substantive meeting.
Does Excel service any part of our area?
Does who?
Excel.
Yes.
I didn't hear the question.
Are they what?
My neighborhood is.
Is it?
My neighborhood, yeah.
I'm the only neighborhood south of the Booner that is, because I've come to find out from problems with Excel.
And then Paul and I are doing board interviews tomorrow at six, six.
Three hours.
Okay, well, we'll have some leftover Pizza Hut party in this, if you want.
Oh, great.
No, you won't.
No, yeah, actually.
There won't be much left.
Okay.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.